Tim, when you're all set. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of December 6, 2023. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Welcome. We are going to start this meeting with two special presentations, but first, we're going to add one to the agenda, but at the moment, we are going to recognize Major Burke. Is Major Burke here? There's Major Burke. Outstanding. So I'm going to, Mr. Administrator, would you take it from here, please, sir? Absolutely. You look good in your civvies, Major Burke.
It's with mixed feelings that, you know, that I have to present Major Burke with some recognition for his 27 years of dedicated service with the Bristol Police Department. I know he's here with his wife, Adrian, and maybe Adrian will join you because I could tell you it is a partnership in law enforcement. And, uh, and we appreciate your support of our, our major over the years. You're a great, a great team for all of us. Major Burke, uh, he worked every shift, I think, every position at the police department. He was very diligent. He was always willing to take on new initiatives in the justice system, which was great. Kept up, kept us, kept us up with the times. And he was just dead, just a great dedicated officer for the town. I know that the chief had given him a, uh, some recognition up at the police station with his colleagues and peers, but I thought it was so important that we, as a administration and the council, recognize him because he did also serve as, when we needed him, he stepped up and he served as the acting police chief, which he needed an outstanding job. So thank you for that. And what I know we have a citation.
You first. Yours is cooler than mine, so.
So, uh, we like, we like practical. And so what we got you is the town watch, Seiko watch. And it has the town seal on it and it has the years of service on the back and we hope you wear it for a long time. Major is now at, uh, Nespin, New England State Police Network, where he's solving a lot of, helped solve a lot of those crimes that are below the surface, but reach out to many of us. So, uh, thank you for your continued service and you're certainly a big loss for the town, but you left the department in a better place. So thank you. And Adrian, thank you also.
You don't get to go yet.
I'm just gonna ask, if you wanted to go, you want me to go?
This is a proclamation signed by my colleagues and myself, the administrator and the clerk. And the clerk captured this well. I'm going to hit a couple of highlights here. 27 years spanning a dedicated service. Major, Major Burke's journey within the department commenced, commenced as a patrolman, fresh out of the academy in 1997. Exemplary trajectory led him to successive promotions. Very nice job. That is outstanding. Lieutenant in 2010, captain in 2016, and obviously major now. This is just a small part. You were there on, and we talk about this, about volunteerism with our boards and commissions, but you were a full-time person when everybody's home enjoying Thanksgiving dinner, when everybody's home nice and warm in bed at 2:00 in the morning. You were out there and you weren't by yourself. Some of your colleagues are here this evening along with the chief. And this council and this town very much appreciates it. We are so fortunate and unfortunately unique in the communities out there that we appreciate our police departments. We look at it as a vital part of what makes Bristol a safe and also an inviting town. That magical balance that is not found easily is found with our department. We often talk about the way that Bristol and particularly in the police department is thought of out in the community, not only in Bristol, but in the state and actually in other communities. And I'm talking about Massachusetts and Connecticut. I'm out on the road all day and I hear some phenomenal stories. I'm going to give my colleagues just a moment to share their thoughts too, but I can't say thank you enough and for heartfelt thank you for all that you've done.
Mr. Chairman, I have to echo your comments, you know. I've known Major for quite, quite a few years, you know, we've been back and forth and as well as his spouse, you know, colleague at the high school, when I spent 31 years there as well. But he was always readily and available, as was already stated. And we thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts, you know, for all your service and volunteerism to the town. Thank you and best wishes going forward.
Nate, Major, I'll keep mine a little bit short here. Thank you for your public service to our town. I think our chairman and councilman Texer captured that pretty well. And I'm very confident that you're going to go on and go have a nice, long career, I'm sure, somewhere else. And there's going to be some other people that are very lucky to have you.
Anything else?
Major Burke, oh, go ahead, Mary.
Just to say thank you and best of luck, good health in your retirement. I mean, you're young, you have another whole career right ahead of you, but thank you for everything you've done here. And, you know, when the chairman mentions, you're always out there. When I think of like the big events that we handle in this community, Fourth of July, Christmas, et cetera, it's amazing what, you know, that you all do. And we are very, very fortunate to have the police department, the fire department, all of our public service folks that we have. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Major Burke, it takes a very special person to serve in law enforcement for 27 years. So I want to say, and I think on behalf of all my colleagues, we appreciate all your hard work. Your dedication has definitely made this community a better place, a safer place, a place that can thrive. So we wish you well in your retirement and again, thank you.
Thank you. So just very quickly, I know you have a couple of items that are going to require a lot of time tonight. I'll try to keep it very short. So first, all thank you very much for your support and your guidance along the way throughout the years. 27 years has gone by in a flash. When I left the academy and I came to Bristol, I came through Bristol one time. I grew up in Tyrton. I think the, uh, the Secana Bridge was closed and we had to come through. And then I was in Bristol for One Fourth of July Parade when I was 14 years old. So my exposure to the town before working here, I really didn't know what the town was about. I can tell you 27 years ago, when I started with the Bristol Police Department, the town itself and the department was nothing like it is today. I've seen the town grow over the years, the police department, and it doesn't just happen with one person. It happens with the team. So I've been very fortunate to be part of a great team for the, through the Bristol Police Department under some great leadership. I want to thank Chief Lynch for his dedication and his commitment to serving the community and the, the, all the public service and the community events and community policing initiatives that he put, he put forth. It really does make a difference. And he, his mantra is that, you know, when he has emails, thank you for making a difference. He truly has. To the town administrator, Mr. Contente, he was my supervisor for many years, my direct supervisor. It seemed like when he got promoted, I got promoted all along the way. And we worked together for a number of years and thank you for your support and leadership. I truly appreciate that. And to Mr. Chairman and the council, you have been strong supporters of the police department over the years. I'm very grateful for that. You've put your trust in me over the years and I appreciate everything you have done for the Bristol Police Department and for the citizens of the town. And as far as support, you nailed it. There's nights, weekends, holidays where you're away from your family, 16 hours at a time, multiple stretches where you're working and, you know, you come home quick, you go to bed, you wake up, you go back to work the next day. A lot of what you deal with on the job, you leave it at the door at the police station and you don't bring it home to your family. And it stays with you and you need a strong support team at home. And I had that over the years. I had that with my family, my wife, and I just want to thank her very much for the support that she's given me. And I couldn't have done it without you. And to the citizens of Bristol, it's been a pleasure to serve you. Very grateful for the last 27 years. It's a fantastic community to work in. I'm proud to say I'm a resident of this town. I've, I've raised my family here. We, both our daughters were raised here in town, so we have lots of friends in the community. And I'm very fortunate to have had the support and the friendships of everyone involved. So just thank you very much. And I can tell you that my job now requires me to go to police departments in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. I've been to the FBI office up in Chelsea, the Boston Police Academy, all throughout Rhode Island, Southeast of Massachusetts. And I can tell you that every police department I walk into, I say I'm a retired police officer. They say, okay, great. Have a seat. And then I say, I'm retired from the Bristol Police Department. And next thing you know, they're opening their doors, they're, they're speaking high regards of the Bristol Police Department. So yes, it is true. I'm experiencing firsthand. The Bristol Police Department is top-notch. And the citizens, you should be very proud of your police department. You are all in good hands. And then tonight, when you go to bed, rest assured, the police officers that are working have your safety and your best interests at heart. So thank you very much and I will be around.
Good. One more celebration of excellence. If I could have a motion from the council to add a recognition of the American Council of Engineering Companies of Rhode Island Engineering Excellence Award to the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is, as I just said, is celebrating excellence. And Mr. Administrator, if you could start us on this one also, please.
Sure. Please do. It's really two items. One is to update the town council and the residents of the final completion of a many-year-long project, Tanyard Brook. We have a very brief presentation. I'll try to get through it really quick, but I think the pictures are very telling. So if we could get that presentation up. The other part of what I wanted to showcase tonight was the excellence award that our consulting engineer received. We'll cover that too, but.
Thank you.
So Tanyard Brook, I'll, I'll, mainly again, I will mainly show the photos, next page. It's a, it's a 4,500 foot culvert. If you go back one, starts at the State Street Reservoir on State Street and it ends at near the lobster pot. That's where the outflow is. There's actually a gate there, a tidal gate. Challenge was that it was, Tanyard Brook was a natural stream and maybe 100 years ago. And over time, it was getting filled in and encroached by rightfully so at the time, development, which was much needed. So it was one point covered up, which caused, I'm really speeding through this presentation. It really caused restrictions during heavy rains and storm events and caused flooding at least 40 homes. The area is actually 500 acres of the Tanyard Brook watershed, but there's about 40 homes that are directly adjacent to this brook that were getting flooded regularly. So actually, it was around 2008 is when the first phase started and that was completed around then. And it, it corrected the area from the outflow to Garfield Avenue. You can keep going. This is what some of the rain events look like. Heavy rain event. So the challenge was to, to correct the problem for a 10-year storm, which, uh, which was a frequent storm. So this is what the construction process looked like. You can see how close the culvert had to be placed between the homes. And one thing I will say is Diane Williamson is here and we owe a lot of gratitude to Diane. She, she worked with those 40 homeowners and we had to get an easement for each and every one of them. So we had to work through garages, sheds, gardens, trees. And we wanted to make sure that every one of those residents was happy when the project was completed. That's what a section of the culvert looked like. I don't know if you saw them, the last couple of years, they were on Monhope Avenue near the DPW. They're like four by 10. Some of them were four feet high, 10 feet wide. They're placed in by a local contractor, CB Utility. Right next. So what you see at the top photo there, that is the daylighted area. So that's at the corner of Wood Street and Ferry Road. And so now if it's high tide and it's raining heavily, that's designed to actually flow in the overflow and it'll fill in that wetland area around it that you see on Hope Street at Hopeit Wood. That's the lower photo is the floodgate. So that's like a check valve. Allows the water to leave, but won't allow the saltwater to enter into the, the Tanyard Brook. Next. Photo of that area, the daylighted area. So this just shows what some of the restoration looked like. You can see there was a stone wall on somebody's property. The culvert is actually right under that driveway, very close to the homes. Next. Hey, here's the best photo, right?
Wait a minute.
I want to, part of this is really to give recognition and it's, it's good that Tony is here. Diane Maderis started under Diane Maderis's administration in the council back then. But we've been working closely with Beta Engineering. They've been doing the engineering and I will say it has, so far it's been a success. We're not getting the flooding complaints on Catherine Street in Richmond, Charles Street. So we're keeping our fingers crossed, but it was a success, so much of a success that they received an award, Beta Engineering. And it was an honor. There were many projects that were recognized. Some of them were bridge overpasses with Rhode Island DOT and some other very unique projects and needs throughout the state. But Beta was recognized as the best project, best design, best project. So if the Beta team is here, could you please step forward? We'd like to present you with some recognition. Jay Collier and the lead engineer is Nicole Iain Uzi. There are many others from Beta. If you'd like to recognize a few other names, Nicole, we'd appreciate that for the record.
Um, it's definitely a collaborative effort. Kevin Aguirre, I think, started with you, Tony, going through the easements and then we moved on. Diane Williamson and I did easements as well. Jared Lanairs, Jay Copley, as you had said. And it really, this is such a collaborative project. We couldn't have asked for a better partner than the town. We always felt supported. We always, you moved things along. You made decisions when they needed to be made. Again, Beta Group definitely have a very strong team behind us and also CB Utility. They, they really, they, they were great through those, through those two phases. So we really appreciate it. This is my career project. This is my project that I'll, that I'll think of it and probably my favorite one as well.
They, they did, so the award was, uh, they were acknowledged in arrogance at about a month or two ago. And I know they did get standing applause by the other engineers in the room. We went and the director and I went to represent the town. But I, before they receive their citation for the official record, I want to say that today we did the final paving, actually it was yesterday on Monhope Avenue, but we're not done yet. And Beta is helping us and I want the residents to hear this. We're working on some flooding on Reservoir Avenue and that drainage area there, that's going to stop in the spring, as we all know. We did get some grant funding for that. So Monhope Avenue is still going to be in a little bit of rough shape until we can finish in the spring. We'll do a final paving next summer. And also Beta is helping us with the design on Sherry Avenue, Barnum Street, the watershed there. We're seeking funding for that to correct these flooding issues throughout town. So we're, we're moving along and they, Beta is really exceptional in dealing with the residents and, uh, and being good partners with us, so.
Excellent, excellent.
So this citation is signed by myself and my colleagues, the administrator and the clerk. And the gist is saying outstanding job and we are sharing your success and you're sharing our success. This is very much like a furnace. When it works, it's wonderful and you don't think of it at all. When it doesn't work, it is so obvious. It was obvious. I had a home on Charles Street and that flooding event we had around that time, I remember a couple of feet of water going right through the middle of the water, crossing right, and that wasn't as bad as some other streets. So this has done a tremendous improvement for that area. And as we'll be talking about in a little bit, actually, everything's connected to everything, right? So this is outstanding, but most importantly, this is to say, congratulations. Nice job. You want to come up, please? Thanks, everyone. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. To approve any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes and this is from the town council meeting of November 15th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. To approve any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing and this is for ordinance 2023-23. This is for chapter 28, zoning section 28-1, 28-82, 28-150, 28-152, Article 4, Section 28, 221, Article 9, Division 6, Division 6, Section 28-408, Section 28-409, proposed new section 28, 161, proposed new section 28, 414. And this is for miscellaneous revisions reflecting the new state law changes. This is second reading for adoption.
So this is in front of us and this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up in a moment, but I'll just kind of preface it by saying that this is in response to changes from the state. Some tremendous monumental changes from the state with, in regards to zoning and how it affects so many things. There was a lot of efforts and energies to make these changes. Some of them, and primarily have to do with special use permits. And the state required that each town, including Bristol, if you wanted special use permits, especially if you're not familiar, special use means it isn't normally allowed as a by right as, and you have to get special permission. But you have to have standards on it. That's what this speaks to. So there was a committee that, along with, well, primarily Diane and the committee, that walked through these changes in front of the council. But this is a public hearing. Normally I would ask for for and against, but I'm just going to ask if you would have, if you'd like to speak, you are more than welcome. So is there any, what's that? I love it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Andy Tights, Assistant Town Solicitor.
Welcome, Andy.
And Diane and I thought we would take a few minutes to explain this. I know the council is familiar with it. The first memos were sent to you this summer. And we've been working on it for some time and I know you, many of you have been kept up with it. But we would go over it and I'm sure many of the public, both here in the room and out in TV land, probably don't know about it. So thought we'd take a little bit of introduction for that. This is a result of action by the Rhode Island General Assembly. There's over 300 pages of legislation, legal size too, in 13 different bills that were passed by the General Assembly, mostly in June, at the end of the session. Referred to as the housing package, but broader than that, there are several different bills that cover different aspects of the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act, the Zoning Enabling Act, the Development Review Act, and certain other acts. And they overlap each other and they also, um, in a few places contradict one another. But the goal has been to put these together because almost all of these acts had an effect, have an effective date of January 1, 2024. So we've only had basically since July to do that. And there was hope that it might be amended and given an extension, but that hasn't happened. So it's been our goal to get this done so the town is protected. Most of this stuff, the town has no choice on. These are things where the General Assembly has changed the law and it will become effective no matter what the town does. Whether we amend our local ordinance or not, the state law will apply and it won't matter. However, there are certain things where the town does have a choice, does have abilities to make changes or make guide directions and also adverse consequences if, if we don't do it. So I will try to talk about that. The housing package was intended to address the state's shortage of housing in general and affordable housing in particular, by streamlining and standardizing the local processes for review of development. There's emphasis on residential development, but commercial development is also affected. And some of the important points to remember as we go through this is these particular amendments are the results of several months of work, collaborative effort, particularly between the planning staff. They've done a yeoman job, putting in lots of hours, the planning board and our office as legal counsel. There have been several meetings, many, there have been several public meetings with the planning board going over these changes. Second, all of the people involved in the process agree that some refinement is going to be likely. We don't know what's going to happen. This is going to be a brave new world come January 1st. It invariably happens that first application that walks in the door is something, oh, we didn't think of that. And some of this stuff, the language is, I'm sure this will shock you and particularly former legislator there, Mary, that some of this language is poorly worded and a little bit vague. So there may be questions about interpretation. So we do expect to be revisiting it again next spring and we will probably be making changes as we see how things go. The zoning ordinance is meant to be a living document, so that's appropriate. Third, it's important that our ordinance does reflect what has happened at the state level. We could say, oh, well, what the heck, the state changed the law. We'll just leave our ordinance, state law will apply. But that's not fair to all the people who come before and say, oh, they look up our zoning ordinance and then they come in and we say, oh, that doesn't apply because the state law changed it. No, we need to have a state, a local ordinance that's consistent with it for the benefit of the people. And finally, I just want to note that this is part of the package. The planning board will be adopting amendments to their land development and subdivision regulations. And these amendments don't require council approval, but they will be by local ordinance. They'll be coming to you. So you'll have a copy of it, have a chance to review it and comment on that as well. That will be coming hopefully in early January is our plan. So now let me talk to you about some of the changes. There's kind of several buckets, if you will. One is procedural changes. One of those is notice. All notice now will be by first-class mail. No more certified mail. And that's actually a good thing because certified mail is actually not the best way to notify people. If the post office does the job and you're not home, they just leave you a note. And then maybe you gotta go down on Saturday after work or when you have time to get to the post office to get it. Or if the post office just leaves it there, then there's still no proof of receipt. Or if the post office just leaves it there, then there's still no proof of receipt. So first-class mail is what the General Assembly has said. And this also will make it much cheaper for people, applicants, whether it be a big project or someone who just wants to put a staircase in their side yard that needs a variance. It makes it cheaper for them sending a first-class notice instead of certified return receipt, which is getting close to ten dollars a person for notice now. Secondly, one of the big things that's happened here, and I think you probably read some of this in the paper, is the State Housing Appeals Board. The Affordable Housing Component. The State Housing Appeals Board was created back in the early nineteen nineties when the low and moderating, it was called the Affordable Housing Act, now called the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act. When that first came into place as a one-stop shopping effort for developers who were doing at least twenty percent affordable housing. And there's a separate appeals process that goes to the State Housing Appeals Board. That has now been eliminated. As of December thirty-first, they will go out of business. And appeals from that act will be going to the Superior Court. And there's a, actually, a special new calendar that's been created at the Superior Court level called the Land Use Calendar. And that will handle the appeals from the Affordable Housing, Zoning Development Review Acts, anything concerning land use. The idea will be before one judge who will have expertise in that and also be able to expedite those matters. And I actually just heard today that at least for the first term on the spring, it will be Judge Lampier will be the judge of the Land Use Calendar. So those are some of the big procedural changes. And I'm gonna just take a moment to just talk about, I think people have confusion about certain items and developments, particularly about affordable housing. And I want to just kind of hit the three big areas, because they're separate. There's three things. One is what we call a comprehensive permit. That's something that comes out of the Affordable Housing Act. And basically, it was modeled after the Massachusetts Act in the nineteen nineties, which, by the way, the Massachusetts Act name is the Anti-Snob Zoning Act. And the idea was to create this expedited, one-stop shopping process for permits for affordable housing. That's still there. And if you, enough developers providing at least twenty-five percent affordable housing, something that's restricted is affordable for at least thirty years, then there's still that process. But that has been further streamlined. It used to be a master plan and a preliminary hearing, very much like major subdivisions, major land developments. The new legislation eliminates the master plan stage entirely. Developers will go, they'll have their pre-application with staff, then they'll go right to the planning board for their preliminary. It did not eliminate the public hearing. The public hearing is still there for comprehensive permit before the planning board. People will get notice of it. That hasn't been eliminated from it. That previous stage has. But there still will be, at the first stage, which will now be preliminary, there will be a public hearing. The second thing that we hear a lot of people talking about is inclusionary zoning. And inclusionary zoning is one of the tools in the toolbox to provide more affordable housing. And the town of Bristol has had this in its zoning ordinance for many years. And what it provides is that when anyone is doing a development over a certain threshold, such as five units, whether by five-lot subdivision or multifamily, they have to provide at least twenty, twenty percent of affordable housing for that. Twenty percent of those units have to be affordable. And we've had various provisions to provide density bonuses to try to, to try to cover the cost of that affordable. The new law changes the formula. And I'm not gonna go into a big thing on it, but essentially, it now provides like a two-to-one bonus. For every affordable unit, the developer gets two non-affordable market rate units. And when we looked at the numbers and the planning board, part of the thought is that people may not be doing that much. We don't have a lot of large areas with large subdivisions. And also that, that's not really useful to the town, because that barely gets you over the ten percent. When you add in that double bonus, you've no longer got your twenty percent, which is gonna get you closer to your ultimate ten percent. You've just, you're just barely staying even. So I will tell you that different towns have gone different ways on that. But what is recommended here to you by the planning board is that that inclusionary zoning will be removed for new applications, at least initially. The ordinance is gonna say anything that's already in the pipeline is still going forward, although we don't have anything yet that's currently active. But if something came in in the next month, it would be under that. But beyond that, as of January one, it's not going to be available. And I think the idea is we're gonna see what happens with that. And part of it may be, will the legislature change it? Will they change that formula? Because that's certainly the consensus throughout the state with many of the towns, that that change has made that tool not useful anymore. It has been useful in the past. It could be again. But at the moment, we're going to put it on the shelf and not use it for the time being. And then finally, there's another section of the law that I think people conflate with this. It's called adaptive reuse. Now, this is not necessarily related to low and moderate income housing. It could be just done for market rate housing. But what it does, it's encouraged, intended to encourage housing production in general by allowing commercial and other non-residential buildings to be converted to residential or mixed-use use as of right. Now, when I say mixed use, even the mixed use has to be at least fifty percent housing. So that means that mills, churches, schools that have been decommissioned, commercial structures can be converted to housing. There is a formula there, which if twenty percent of it is affordable, then there is a specific density formula that's provided by the state law. And it's also meant to apply to basically existing buildings. Something, somebody can't come in, buy a building, tear it down and build something new and say there it's adaptive reuse. No. It has to be actually reusing the shell of the building that's there, and it has to be mostly within the existing envelope of the building. No expansion. There's language that talks about expanding outward for things that are required for code and whatnot. So I read, for example, if someone were to put an elevator shaft outside the building, or an exterior staircase, or HVAC units on the roof, those items would be allowed, but they couldn't expand the building. I know you've probably all read about the school proposal and downtown warrant, and they're planning a whole separate building to expand it. That would be, that, that can be done under a comprehensive permit today and tomorrow in January second, has nothing to do with adaptive reuse. The adaptive reuse is only the original building there. It doesn't allow that expansion for further residence or commercial use, only for the infrastructure. So those are our three separate elements, which are all specifically designed to produce more housing and elements of big changes in the law. So, um, the, I'm not gonna go through the details, but we're available for any of the questions. The third set of changes are those that broadly affect zoning and planning. And one of them, which the chairman alluded to, is this idea about special use permits. Special use permits have been in the zoning law since nineteen ninety-one. Before that, they were there. They were called special exceptions. The idea is it's between a use that's permitted as of right and a use that needs some sort of variance where someone would have to prove a hardship. It's a use that we think when we're writing the ordinance that this is appropriate for a particular zone, but we want to further look at it. We want the zoning board. We want notice to go to the neighbors and have the zoning board take a look at it in more detail and see if, is it right in this particular spot in the zone? A classic example of that is gas stations. Gas stations being allowed in commercial zones, but usually, let's take a look, make sure, because they're high traffic, they've got all the flammable stuff, we want to have a second look at that. In nineteen ninety-one, when the law was enacted, it did say back then that special use permits were supposed to have standards for each special use. However, there was no, there was no enforcement mechanism. We talk about the difference between mandatory and directory. And even when something says shall, that's only directory unless there's a consequence, if you don't do it. So the General Assembly this June put a consequence there on special use permits. And said, you shall have, first of all, they tightened it up and said, specific and objective standards for every special use permit. And if you don't, then every special use permit is just deemed permitted as of right, if you don't have those standards. So that obviously was a big concern that be addressed before January one. So what, there were a lot of meetings. We looked at it. One of the first things we did was look to see, do we need all these special use permit elements in our ordinance? Do we? Because I will admit, when we were writing these twenty, thirty years ago, there was a tendency to be, you could either say efficient or lazy. But typically, you might see a use, I, often on the right side of the use table, those are the commercial and industrial zones. The left side, it would be the residential zones. And you'd see that use there, and you'd see it as a yes in the commercial and a no in the residential. And then when you got to the middle, like with neighborhood commercial, or like what we call our limited business, which it's a business zone that allows residential, yeah, we didn't know what to do with it. We said, oh, we'll put an S there and let the zoning board decide. So the first thing we did was went through and say, which one of those, what of those do we need? Which one of them is just should be yeses and nos, and we don't have to, if we eliminate it, then we don't have to come up with standard for it. So we reduced the number of standards we need. And then we went back and drafted the various standards for the uses. Some of them were there. Some of them, we had standards quite detailed. Sometimes we had the standards in the definition, and we need to cut, paste, and move those standards to the standard section. But we've covered those, so there's now no special use permit left without a standard. So I think that's important to note. I will say that, to the best of my knowledge, all of these changes that you have here before you tonight are based on the requirements of the state law. It was a great temptation as we went through them to see if we, oh, that should get fixed. That should get fixed. Other than pure typos, we did not do that. We resisted that temptation. We can honestly say all the stuff here is required by state law. And again, we'll come back to this in the future and look for those other things that we can do to make it better. But we didn't, we didn't succumb to that temptation to make any other changes. A few other new things. Unified development review is a big thing. It's not something you have a choice about, but just so people know. Now, people don't have to go to both the planning board or the zoning board if they need zoning relief and planning board relief. The planning board is empowered to grant variances in special use permits. So anybody, not even just affordable housing, but anybody who needs both of that relief will go to one spot, and the planning board will be granting variances in special use permits going forward. And don't worry, we will be having training in January to, to go over the planning board, to teach them the variant standards that they otherwise had no need for. There's also some slight changes in the variant standards itself. That's much more minor. We'll be doing that with the zoning board. Another thing is zoning modifications. Again, this is something in the law that's been there for a while, which basically said if somebody's got a small dimensional change, up to twenty-five percent side yard variance, something like that, they could go to the zoning enforcement officer. And the zoning enforcement officer could grant that, but subject to a notice that went out certified mail to all the neighbors, and then they had thirty days in which to respond. If any neighbor objected within that thirty days, it would then just go to the zoning board as a normal course of events. However, it was almost never used. The cost between the time of the certified mail and the thirty days, it basically took twice as long as if you just went to the zoning board. So I think it's been only used once or twice in the last decade or two in Bristol, even though we have it in the ordinance. The State General Assembly now has changed that to say that, first of all, it's first-class mail, and it's basically only fourteen days in which to object. So they've speeded, they've speeded that part up, and they've added a little bit of standards. So they've made it much more usable. They also have said if the change is less than five percent, you don't even have to provide notice if it's that small. Now, I don't want people to think that the zoning enforcement officer has to grant these. He doesn't. It's not automatic. Even the below five percent ones. He, or it could be a she, whoever looks at it can say, no, I, I don't approve it. You gotta go to the zoning board if you want this. But for the ones, the little ones that we know nobody cares about, the zoning board's gonna grant anyway, that we've dealt with, that is a very good service to the public to provide a quicker and cheaper path for these small changes that would come up. Now, the state law, this is one of the areas where the state gave you an option in that what they said was you had to allow a modification of at least fifteen percent. But you could allow modifications by your zoning enforcement officer, and these are with notice to the neighbors, of up to twenty-five percent. So because Bristol had twenty-five percent already there, we've left it at the twenty-five percent. We think this is something useful. We've got a good zoning enforcement officer. We've got good planning staff to look at stuff. And we think this will be useful. So we, that, one of, that's one of those things where you have a choice, and we've recommended going to the twenty-five percent, because Bristol, it's not going to, and it's just keeping what we've got. So, um, so the other thing that is kind of a major change that we've talked, that, that you're not gonna see directly now, because it's really coming, it's mandated by the state, you don't have a choice, and it is gonna be mainly in the development review regs, which is for things that were subdivisions, minor subdivisions and minor land development projects, the states now had sta, have changed the standards. So a minor subdivision used to be five lots or less. Now it's gonna be nine lots or less. And those minor developments, if they don't involve extension or creation of a street, or any variance or waiver, will be handled administratively. They'll be handed by the administrative officer and the technical review committee. They won't go to the planning board. Again, that's not something you have a choice on. The state has said it. There's really no decisions. But it's something that we're changing in the development review regs to provide that process. Just something you know about. It's totally apart from everything else in here. It's part of the overall idea of streamlining it. And there isn't really a choice. It's going to become effective whether you do it or not. So, in conclusion, we do anticipate that members of the public are gonna have questions about this. So another thing that we're working on with your staff is a citizen's guide to the process, so that we'll be able to have something for them for the new process. And I also will note that the legislative committees that enacted these acts are still in, their, their terms have been extended. So we may see more of this with the new legislative session, including we're specifically expecting amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which was from two years ago. And everybody agrees that it's totally unintelligible and conflicts with itself. But that will be, we do expect changes to that. So, so that will be the second thing. We're not done with the changes in the legislature, and we're not done with our local changes. We'll be back here. So please don't feel, you know, it's do it now or forever hold your peace. We'll definitely be looking at it. So I do want to mention one specific thing. Are you gonna, would you want, you wanna do it? You would do it? Yes. I've talked too long. It's your turn. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Diane to talk about more of the specifics. And one change in one of the special use standards that we've come up with that we need introduced as, be basically a form amendment today. that we need introduced as be basically a forum member today.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. And um, good evening, everybody. I'll, I'll be very brief. Andy explained it very well. And so I don't know if I need to go into any more detail with any of that. If you have any questions, um, the zoning officer is here at Tanner. A couple of planning board members are here in the audience as well. But uh, basically um, the job that we had as the planning board and the staff to the planning board was the special use permit standards. As Andy said, most of this other um, enabling legislation was not, there were no decision points made. It was really just, this is what we have to adopt. But I just kinda wanna highlight, the planning board spent a lot of time um, reviewing the special use permit standards. There were seven, when we started, there were seventy-five uses that had um, needed a standard written. And the board went through each one very deliberately, very intentionally. They looked at scenarios. They looked at um, other permits that were given, other applications of similar um, uses. And um, they came up with standards for all of these uses except where, as Andy said, we wanted to shift it to a yes, because it could be allowed by right or a no, because it was felt that the use wasn't appropriate in any zone anyway. So I also, I just wanna thank Ed Tanner and Nick Toth in my office because we had to kind of pull this together very, this is a very abbreviated timeline, as Andy stated. So we had um, divided it up. We researched what other communities did and we presented it to the board. As I said, they had two meetings in November. Um, two long meetings um, in November to review these. We are looking at reexamining things. We are looking at what other communities have adopted as part of this. We're looking at what applications come into other communities so we can learn from them. We will be back um, before you with edits. We expect. Um, the planning board did express concern with the adaptive reuse and the inclusionary zoning as, as Andy mentioned. And we're gonna really um, wanna reexamine um, definitely the adaptive reuse. Um, inclusionary, we are looking at, we did get a small grant to um, bring in a consultant to update our housing, the housing element of the comprehensive plan. So I'm hoping that through that process, which will be before you in early um, twenty twenty-four, we might find some other tools that we can apply or as, you know, as Andy said, maybe the state law will change. So inclusionary zoning becomes a better tool for the town. It hasn't really been applied all that often since it was adopted, I think back in twenty-ten is when it went on the books. We've had a couple of um, projects that created housing on the ground as a result of it, but it's, it's, it's not really a well widely used tool. This is a living document. So um, again, as we go forward, we'll be bringing forth edits to you. And so I just wanna say the draft that you have before you includes the recommendations from the planning board's review. And at their November twenty-first meeting, they did send a recommendation to you to adopt the changes as reviewed, as revised. And they made a finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the general purposes of zoning. And so um, I just wanna thank everybody for, you know, getting us to this point. The solicitor's office, Amy Goins and Andy did a great job with the heavy lift from the legislation and I, I, I'm gonna have uh, their office on speed dial because as we work through this for the first time, there's gonna be a lot of questions and I think what's somewhat unique is that in the past, updates to the zoning have been prompted by staff or prompted by the board. And so we are, we have an institutional knowledge about why these edits have to be made, but this is all, you know, really brand new from the legislation. And so um, so we'll be uh, I'm sure, reaching out to Andy's office quite often. Um, and so as, as was mentioned, there is an edit. We're continuing to reexamine this even as of um, earlier this week. We looked at the um, special use permit standards and I do have to read this into the record for you. So do you want me to just, I can just read this in, right? Okay. So there's two provisions, um, two special use, uses. Uh, uh, groupings of uses that really relate to um, non-household domesticated animals and chicken hens. And the um, board drafted standards, which were good, but I think we needed to tweak those a little bit to get more protection to the neighbors and um, clarify um, one important piece, which are setbacks to the property line. So we are recommending that um, item number three in proposed section twenty-eight dash one fifty E and item number two in section twenty-eight dash one fifty O be revised to state. So for twenty-eight dash one fifty E, we'd like to replace what you have with the following sentences. Shelters and enclosures must be kept a minimum of fifty feet from all lot lines. However, the board may allow less than that if the abutting zone is other than residential or limited business. And for twenty-eight dash one fifty O, we'd like to replace the um, section two, number two with the chicken coops and runs must be kept a minimum of forty feet from all lot lines. However, the board may allow less than that if the abutting zone is other than residential or limited business. Correct. So, so just um, yes. So just to clarify, um, we have the forty feet from the property line and the fifty feet from the property line are what we have in the standards presently. But we wanna be able to um, give the board some flexibility if they can, if, if it makes sense to um, shift those structures a little bit further away from the residential properties if there's nothing behind them that would impact them.
Seems to make sense. Diane, I, I feel like what you, what you read was different than what we have right here. Um, shel- shelters and enclosure, enclosure shall be no closer than fifty feet to a neighboring residential dwelling unless the owner of the neighboring residence has provided written consent to the same.
Correct. So that was in the draft ordinance that is before you. However, we're proposing an edit to that, which you should have. It's a two, um, it's a much shorter, right? So when we, when we were discussing the um, the edits, we realized that we needed to tighten up those standards in those two provisions.
Thank you. That was a whole lot of information. Yeah, I know. Um, and actually, and I am gonna open up the public hearing unless Diane or Andy wanted to share anything else?
No, I, I think we'll, we'll sit down, but feel free to call us up afterwards.
We may do that. I'm sure we may. So. So I am gonna open, before I do that, I wanted to reiterate a thank you to the efforts. You heard the explanation, not the efforts, not, not what actually was changed. You heard about why it was being changed. We heard about why it was being changed. So thank you for the time and effort that you put into it and the thoughtful way that uh, was put in front of this council and then ultimately the public. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. And as I said, normally I would ask for for and against, but I'm gonna, I ask if you would like, if you uh, if you are for or against uh, or anything that you wanted to share on that, you are more than welcome to come up. I don't know why you wouldn't be overwhelmed. It's okay, because it's a lot of information.
Uh, good evening. I guess I'll have to hold it. Um, my name is Brian Clark. I live at thirty-one Evelyn Drive. Um, I'm also a member of the planning board. Um, I'm speaking as myself tonight and not as a member of the planning board. Uh, this was a Herculean effort that uh, Diane and her staff had to go through. So I think there should be some acknowledgement there of the amount of work that was done. This legislation is a big bag of stuff that doesn't make any sense. And it was dropped in our laps to have to deal with this. When people hear, you know, the clerk reading it in, it's dash one, dash one oh eight, dash three, dash four, and it kinda puts everybody to sleep. Okay. And the normal person in town doesn't really have to know about a lot of this stuff because we have boards, we have zoning boards and we have planning boards and we have members on those boards who know what's going on, trying to do this. So we are acting in the best interest of the people who live here. This legislation is about taking local control away from these boards. Okay. And ramming stuff through that the state wants. And make, no, that is absolutely what this is about. Okay. There's gonna be a lot of stuff on your plates and a lot of phone calls to your, you get to the council as time goes on. These are decisions that are gonna affect this town for decades. Um, the adaptive reuse means that if I have a commercial building, regardless of zone, let's say there's a downturn in the economy and I can't get my storefronts rented, I'll just turn it into market rate apartments. I don't even have to have an affordable guideline there. Like at least if you had an affordable guideline, you could say, well, you know, at least we're doing something where we get an affordable unit there. This is, doesn't have to be. And I highly doubt that a commercial unit that's been turned into a residential unit will ever be reverted back to commercial. You make more money with residential. Okay, for the most generally. I'm just trying to get through my notes here. I this adaptive reuse, I'm telling you, this is gonna be a real problem going forward, in my opinion. Okay. Um, and you know, Bristol was always, has always been a place you can live, work and play. If there's no place to go to work because the commercial zones have all been transferred over to residential, including manufacturing. So that means if I own a manufacturing building, I can take fifty percent of it and turn it into apartments. So I'm gonna be next to, you know, I mean, if you live in your neighborhood, Nathan, just using you as an example. If I wanna buy a house down the street from you, or if I wanna, and I wanna open a outboard engine repair shop and I'm running engines all day long, you'd be like, you can't do that. It's not zoned. That's not allowed. Because this is residential. Well, now we, think of it in reverse. Now you can just throw residential in a commercial zone. Okay, this is not good, in my opinion. And um, I found it um, concerning that my state rep and the other state rep never once contact, who voted for this bill, our reps from Bristol, I'm Warren, never once contacted our planning board, never once contacted a member of our planning board to say, hey, this is coming down the pipe. This is what's going on. Nothing. This was literally dropped in our laps and left for us to fend for ourselves to try to figure this out. So um, with that, I'll uh, sit down. Thank you.
You wanna ask Brian a question?
Go ahead, please.
When you said any um, manufacturing can be changed into housing, isn't, is that if it's an existing manufacturing or if it's an abandoned uh, building? Like in other words, when I've heard the speaker talk about this on the radio, what have you, he has said, well, that would be great housing to convert to housing because it's already got sewer and water and stuff like that in there. But I, I didn't, I never heard any discussion of the um, idea of if it is currently being used. And the other thing, I agree a hundred percent with you that this is like, taking local control away is not a great thing for us. And in our, right before this meeting, we interviewed planning board members or people who want to be on the planning board. And this was a big topic of conversation and uh, that we brought up with them. And in how we really have to be on top of it to be able to testify and to tell legislators what we think, just for the reasons that you just stated, that no one came to us and said, hey, by the way, whatever we know, we've know because we have um, heard it, read about it, whatever, heard it on the news. And um, one of the people who had applied for the planning board was um, in, you know, in uh, lending and was saying that he had had a presentation with an attorney um, in Newport. And we thought, oh, what a great idea. We'll have to have Andy do that for us, which he pretty much did tonight in a way, anyway. But um, I think there's still a lot of questions that we all need to learn a lot about this because it has been a quick turnaround and there will definitely be more coming down the pike, I think. So thank you for bringing that up.
Andy, you able to answer Mary's question?
Yes. The ordn- the, the General Assembly's bill does not specify that the building has to be vacant or abandoned to be converted.
Oh, so people can just like decide that they wanna take their manufacturing business and retire and turn it into housing?
Um, yes. Now, I, I don't know that. I don't think it's as bad as we're thinking, you know, people who've got Butler buildings and concrete block buildings. I mean, it's probably, it's probably not gonna be feasible to do that. It's not gonna be economically feasible. You gotta get windows and light and air and exits and things like that. So it's probably not going to be a big problem. I think it's, it's more useful and more designed for like the mill buildings.
Right, right.
That we have. I mean, there are a lot of communities that have not been receptive at all to particularly the rural communities, but that have the mills to conversion of them. So um, I don't think that was the intent so far, but that, that could be. I think it's probably more of a concern. Um, you know, the, the, the Hope Street storefronts are probably more of a concern um, of being converted. And yes, there is that problem of, you know, once the cucumber becomes a pickle, it's hard to go back to a cucumber. Um, so um,
Very clear. Thank you.
But you know, I, I don't, I don't think we know at this point how much it will be. Um, you know, how, how much it's gonna be used that way.
I just have one quick follow-up and I apologize because I know people are here for another topic. Um, is the League of Cities and Towns and other folks working on making this clearer and correcting these aspects of it? And where does the legislative leadership stand on that? Do you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I don't think he wants to be on tape.
I'm, I'm trying to put this, um, the League of Cities and Towns as well as um, the Rhode Island chapter of the American Planning Association, which I'm a member and Diane and, and I'm a member of their legislative committee, was very much involved with this throughout last year, when there were the commissions and so forth and presenting and aside from the fact that there are things, you know, we disagree on the policy, we did provide a lot of things saying, even if you're gonna, we don't like the policy, but if you're gonna do it, we suggest you change this and this, so at least it's not confusing. Um, and for the most part, most of those suggestions were ignored.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Very diplomatic. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So it is still public hearings. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. Steve Katz, forty-two River Street, also a member of the planning board and speaking as a citizen tonight. Um, I will echo what uh, my compatriot on the planning board, Brian, said. Um, this is very disheartening because this literally does take away our ability to have local control and Bristol is vastly different than Central Falls, than Providence, than Richmond. And you can go on and on and on. We're all different. We all have our uniqueness. And yet, the state has decided to make one size fits all. And that's disheartening. Uh, the adaptive reuse portion is very troubling to me. Um, as an example, uh, if the owners of Ciabber decided to sell and they got an offer from a developer in New York City, they could go in there and they could put apartments. Same could be right around the corner from me in the old Blockbuster, which has sat vacant for a number of years. Or um, the concrete monstrosity right next to it, which has had various uses. That could also be changed. So it's, and we as members of the planning board have no say. Literally cannot challenge them. And if we do challenge them, they will take us to court. Um, it, it's that bad. And um, it, it is disheartening that nobody from the state talked to us, said, hey, this is what we're working on. What do you think? What are your suggestions? We were never consulted, never asked. Diane was never consulted nor asked. Um, and that's just not right. Now I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Lauren Curtis. I live.
Could you bring our broken mic? Thank you.
Lauren Curtis. I live at two sixty-five Hope Street in Bristol. I just have a general comment and a question, actually. Uh, general comment is, is, in the term enabling legislation is used, always makes me nervous. Just us. What's it enable? Um, anyway, my question is, um, Andy, I think you made the comment in streamlining the application process. An applicant no longer has to go through both planning and zoning. Um, the planning will now make decisions. My que- my question is, I think you're already down one person in planning. And that the second comment is, you had mentioned, we will be doing training. And the, the second comment is, you had mentioned, we will be doing training for the planning board to help with zoning. Who is the we that's doing the training for the planning and what does that entail?
Andy, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, so just for the record, it's called unified development. And it's interesting you talk about the enabling because this actually has been in the law since about twenty fourteen or fifteen as enabled. If a community wants, wanted to do unified development, they could since then. As a matter of course, the only ones that have done it have been the big cities, Cranston and Providence are pretty much the only ones that have picked it up, and actually Providence picked it up, and they've been doing a lot of it the last couple of years. But it was enabling, you could take it or leave it. Now, it's been changed to say, everybody shall do this. So, so I don't want people to think there won't be a review, it's just only gonna go to one body instead of two bodies to, to do it. And to answer the specific question about the who's the we, the training, I guess, I guess the me, the we is me and Amy Golds. Will be the one and we're, we'll be at, you know, we'll be at a planning board meeting, it's a public meeting. I'm actually also involved with a group set up by Nancy Hess at the Division of Statewide Planning. One of the things that the law changed a, a year before was requiring planning board and zoning board and the Stark District Commission members are required to have a certain number of continuing education hours every year. And we've actually started it, we need to finish up that three hour intro, but then you're required to have another hour, and I'm on the advisory group for that. And we're working on basically an hour course. And in fact, I somewhat volunteered to, to kind of pilot it, because I knew I was gonna be doing it with our boards and the other towns we represent in January. And from there, we'll work, it will presumably eventually become an online thing that anybody can access. But anybody in Bristol is, anybody in the state is welcome to come to the Bristol Planning Board meeting that we have this in and hear it. So.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else wanna speak? Alright, can we have a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so typically we wait, as we just did, to, Andy?
Yes, could I just ask the clarification, the council, that's to adopt as amended tonight with that, the two changes you had to the special use standards for the non-domesticated livestock and chicken hens? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct, thank you.
Approved as amended.
Well said, sir, well said. Okay. So, it, our next step is to amend, as the solicitor just said, I'm sorry, as to adopt with those amendments as stated, excuse me. Counsel?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to adopt with amendment as stated, any discussion? I'm gonna take just a moment, I wanted to wait till the public hearing was closed. I concur with our planning board's members' discussion this evening. I think that this is, if you've ever painted a window, you use a small brush to paint a window. Zoning is like that, is that across the street can be a different zone. What the state has made us do now is paint with an eight inch roller. And you do not cut in with an eight inch roller, you cover things over. You make decisions that are not good for every community. And their goal, their stated goal was to make it simpler, to make more affordable housing, and those stated goals are good. The adoption and the actual outcome of this is absolutely horrible. And it is putting all of our communities in harm's way. And as stated a couple of times, we have no idea what this is going to mean. But, on the flip side of it, I and the council thank you, all of you, for your hard work in adjusting as much as we could to protect our community. We're not going away. So we're gonna continue to do these things and we need to, we actually need to schedule a legislator's meeting to discuss some of these, not just this, a lot of things, and share our concerns and our thoughts. And it is so very important, and zoning in particular, these changes have massive consequences or potential, so. Any other discussion?
Diane, I just had a quick question in regards to Robin Rogue, inclusionary for the record, that, that will not change, we are still gonna hold to that twenty percent that stays just moving forward. We're gonna put that inclusionary.
Well, yeah, because actually they were not inclusionary, they were before inclusionary. It was a specific requirement of the council back in twenty oh seven, twenty oh eight to do it. And then you put your own requirement in as part of their zone change. So they are outside of the inclusionary framework completely, so they are still subject to the conditions of your zone change.
Great.
Great clarity question, thanks Tim.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks Diane.
Thank you Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask the council, I think the majority of the people that are here are for agenda item, and I know we have other things we wanna discuss, but it was for I six, am I correct with that? Majority? Okay. Could, is, may I suggest in council, we move that forward?
So moved, second.
Alright, so we had a motion made by, I'm sorry, who made the motion? Okay, so Tim did, Mary seconded it to move I six forward, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm just gonna start off this real quick and typically these are receiving files for us, meaning they come in front of us, DM asks for our input on it, and typically we just receive and file it. I understand, we have a letter that was sent to the council, let me go to that, bear with me just a second, I'm out of order here, there it is. And we have a letter asking this council to make a couple of adjustments to that. One of them is clarity on whether or not the town actually supports this project. And I'm, I'm asking for clarity from anybody here, but I'm not aware of this council ever taking official action supporting that. Let me be really clear, nor did we take action to say we don't want it there. I and my colleagues believe in the process, both in local level, and I know I just hit the state very hard just a moment ago. But there is a clear and difficult DEM process, and I believe it needs to go through it, but I do agree that this council did not officially support. I think my colleagues and I would support sending a letter to DEM saying that we are neutral on this. I know the other port of the letter also said that was asking that we weigh in on the sensitivity of the area, and specifically with, well, the public approve the bond, the two hundred million dollar bond with the high school. So telling DEM, Diane, refresh my memory, we paid for a study, our, an engineering firm, back in oh seven or seventeen, I forgot what it was.
Two thousand and seven.
Okay, so, and I guess it was requested, if, if I understood it correctly, and Mr. Schwanard, I'll give you a moment to, to talk in a sec, that we make sure that we remind DEM that there will be additional impacts in that area. That seems very reasonable to me, and I think it's very reasonable with my colleagues, I'm gonna get my colleague, my colleagues will have a moment to speak. But all of that sounds reasonable, so, because we don't, we don't support, nor do we not. But we do believe in the process, and that our process locally is outstanding. The DEM process is actually outstanding too, it's quite difficult, so that's a good thing, it should be a good thing, so, colleagues?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm in agreement with you, I think definitely we need to send a letter to the DEM indicating that this council obviously did not support this hotel. And also I think we need to make it clear that in this letter that, to the DEM, that we are very concerned about the flooding in that area. We're potentially, well, we are gonna have a new high school. And if this hotel goes in, this community, this wonderful neighborhood is kind of sandwiched in between, which could be very, very disruptive when we're getting those torrential rains, so I just wanna make it very clear that I think we need to really call out the flooding in that area, the DEM, where we have some concerns.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. You know, the things that is in your, the request that you submitted is exactly, I had written it up in my notes even before I got to that point. You know, we, it's alleging that we have supported this project, we haven't. Officially, we've heard this issue before, kind of was like going away for a while, now it's back. I think there's a great number of concerns. But let's stick to the water issues right at the moment. And, you know, the idea that we don't really know, I mean, every, you know, this project, where is it going to like take care of all the drainage issues, the high school projects, where's it gonna be no drainage issues? That all remains to be seen, but there's a lot of pressure at, on this watershed to come that, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, and, I mean, we're all gonna do our best to make sure that, that it's all done correctly. But I think that does, does need to be referenced that, you know, while it goes through the process, that we have concerns about it or questions because of other projects that have been approved so far.
Exactly.
Such as the high school, so.
Yeah, well said.
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate some of the concerns I've heard from my colleagues on this, and I'll, I'll also point out that never before, since I've been on the council, has this issue ever came up on the council for us to act on, and so if anything is saying that this council has voiced any type of support for this project, that's wrong. The, the other thing is that, again, to reiterate some of the concerns that my colleagues brought up about flooding, I've walked that neighborhood many times, I've been to some of the homes with our town administrator on Dartmouth Avenue, where there are issues of flooding on some of the roads that we've, we've spent many, many times trying to correct. Time, resources, money, a lot of frustration in that neighborhood, a lot of text messages to me in that neighborhood on holidays when the water freezes over and, and turns into ice, and people are having a hard time getting to into people's driveways and, and things like that on holidays, and so my concerns in that area rise to a, a pretty grave level, and I do think that, you know, I would hope that DEM will perform a very comprehensive analysis of any type of project that will be put near a neighborhood like that.
Anything else from the council?
I, I simply concur, so I, I really don't intend anything else.
Okay, so I said Schwanard, I apologize, Spinar, excuse me. I wanted to start that way so you didn't feel like you needed to make a case on it, so.
So actually.
And before you start, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Ted Spinar, S.P.I.N.A.R.D., and I'm at thirty-five Dartmouth Street. So, the request was specifically what all the council members have agreed to. That is, to let DEM know that there is a serious problem in terms of the flooding, the whole, the potential development could make a bad flooding situation worse by filling the wells. And so, we're asking DEM, or asking the council, just to let DEM know that there is a serious problem and to do, and to urge them to do a comprehensive and detailed assessment of that development in terms of how it might impact, or potentially impact the flooding, as well as the construction of the new high school. The second thing again was that the applicant has indicated in their submission that the town supports it. And we just wanted the council to clarify to DEM that at this point, you have not supported it, or you have not denied it, or whatever. Or you need to, it needs to go through the vetting process in the town. And so I thank you for your consideration. I also thank you for allowing us to, you know, adjusting your agendas so that all these people here could hear what the council has decided on. And then I just ended by saying that I'd like to thank all the people here for your support. And also to point out that there were many people involved in this, to get a hundred signatures takes a great effort. There was many people involved in doing that, and I just particularly like to point that out and thank you for your help, and again, thank you for your decision, we appreciate that, thank you.
Of course.
And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I'm gonna ask now for a, a motion, and Andy, maybe you could help us with that, it's just, how do I encapsulate a couple of minutes worth of dialogue there in a clear motion? Good luck.
Show version.
Andy, do we have the madam, madam clerk, will she be writing the letter, or will that?
Mr. Administrator, you have?
Me, maybe the motion would be to send a letter to DEM that the town did not support the project as indicated in the, the, the communication delivered to you. And then also, the Director of Community Development has some wetland studies that should be referenced and so, and that they do their due diligence in examining the problem areas.
Andy, I'd watch out, that was pretty damn good. The only thing I would ask is that I do agree that we don't, we're neutral on it, I think that's important to say, and then that second part about watching all the, well, said well about our concerns about the water issue, so. Alright, is there a motion of that effect?
Yes, that was my motion.
Alright, beautiful, is there a second?
I'll second, just wanted to add that, Diane, is, who's, who's writing the letter, Diane? Who?
I think the clerk can write the letter on behalf of the council, but I can provide the attached watershed study to go with that letter.
Okay.
Perfect.
I, I would just say that I think we just need to make sure we include that the DEM needs to do a comprehensive review, parentheses, flooding concerns. You know, just to make sure that we've got that covered.
And I think to let them know that we have this big high school project that has passed. You know, we can just be in there, you know, given this situation at the other end, you know, like a mile away, whatever, or not even probably. You know, that, that it's just passed, and that will also apply pressure to this area, of whatever the right wording would be, but.
Okay. I like it. Any other discussion from the council?
You got all that, Melissa?
Thank God, it's all being recorded, right? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, will that letter be going out before the public comment period is over?
Yes.
Expeditions, yes. Okay, you don't have to leave because we're still having fun, so you can stay. Thank you. Madam clerk?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is B two, this is still public hearing, this is CDBG application housing proposals. This is for public hearing and authorization to submit.
Diane, did you wanna speak to this before I open the public hearing? Do you wanna?
We have our consultant here tonight, Mr. Plane, he will, he will speak to this.
Mr. Plane, what I'm gonna do is ask, I'm gonna give you, I'm just gonna give a minute so that way we can hear you clearly, okay? Thank you. So we're just gonna take just an extra minute? Or maybe we don't need to, no, thank you everyone for being so quiet, go ahead, please.
I was so scared they were all gonna speak before you all. My name is Bob Plane and I work for Church Community Housing Corporation, and we help Diane and your excellent planning staff manage its CDBG program. And we are here tonight for a, both a public hearing for two projects that we'd like to apply for, one is for five hundred thousand dollars for the Bristol Housing Authority, which has some much needed improvements that it has to do to some of its bathrooms at its facilities there, and the other is for four hundred thousand dollars for the Bristol Home Repair Program. We don't anticipate that we will use four hundred thousand dollars for the Bristol Home Repair Program, but in an abundance of caution, in case there's that much work, we thought it prudent to apply for that much money. And the other thing that I think is on your agenda tonight is there is a resolution that if the council sees fit, it could vote to approve, and then we can actually apply for these two activities. So if you guys have any questions about CDBG in general, about these projects in particular, I am more than happy to answer what I can.
I, I just, I'm curious about the home improvement program, if you could just elaborate a little bit on that, how, what are the qualifications for those?
So it's open to all Bristol residents who income qualify, and to income qualify, a single person has to earn less than, I think the number this year is around fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Fifty-seven, okay.
Yep, yep, and it's, you know, it's supposed to be for code violations and things that like would put a resident in harm's way. You know, so oftentimes we, it's used for roof repairs and You know, so oftentimes we, it's used for roof repairs and. We had one once where someone didn't have a functioning toilet in their house and we were able to make it so they could use their toilet. You know, so it's, you know, like you'd be surprised how many people are out there who are, you know, not. You know, like safe, warm and dry, right? So the Bristol Home Repair Program is. To help ensure that everyone in Bristol can be safe, warm and dry.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very welcome. Any other questions from the council? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So this is a public hearing, so anyone can get up and speak if they so choose. Give it a moment. Okay, can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion close public hearing.
Motion made, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. And so Diane, our motion is for authorization to submit. Is that correct?
Correct. You're authorizing the town administrator to make the application on behalf of the town.
Motion to authorize the town administrator uh, by resolution to submit uh, CDBG.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and I'll see you tomorrow.
You're everywhere, aren't you? Madam clerk.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C one. This is ordinance twenty twenty three dash twenty four, chapter seventeen, article two. To the alcoholic beverage establishments. And this is to decrease the number of the class BV liquor licenses from thirty two to thirty one. This is first reading.
I make a motion that this constitutes first reading.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, that this constitutes first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D one. We have Nicole Ferrera, leader of the pack, six twenty nine Medicom Avenue. This is a request for dog kennel license. This is under new ownership. And I believe.
Is Nicole here?
Yes, she's here. I'm like, I thought I saw her earlier.
Guess what? Come on up. This is your opportunity for a thirty second commercial, but before you do that, is there any questions from the council before we make a motion and second for discussion? No, is there a motion?
I make a motion, do we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Now it's your thirty second commercial, go ahead.
Hi, um, so I, the owner presently is here. I've been at the kennel leader of the pack for almost three years. Um, and hi, I know your dogs. Sorry, I'm nervous.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yeah, yeah. So my name is Nicole Ferrera and I live at fifty five Sherman Avenue in Bristol.
Thank you, thank you.
So we're a well established kennel already. We have a really awesome clientele. Um, and I'm just looking to take over the business so I can continue serving Bristol and all their dogs.
Outstanding. Your your happiness is infectious, I must say. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck.
We need more applicants like that.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D two. We have Kyle Olson from Star Laundry Map. Formerly known as East Bay Laundry Map, twenty six Gooding Avenue. This is a request for public laundry license. This is new ownership. This is continued from November fifteenth. Um, and I believe the reason why it was continued was because it was thought, um, it was misunderstood that this was. Technically a transfer, but we don't do transfer licenses for laundry licenses. It's only new licenses. The applicant was asked to be here, but he is actually flying out today and could not be here, so did submit a letter to the council. Uh, stating his apologies for not being here, but he is looking just to transfer and continue the service of the laundry facility there.
Let's say, based on our positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to approve, discussion? I don't see this letter, I'm sorry.
I was looking on the.
I was looking for today.
Tonight, yeah.
Yes, yes. Any other discussion?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one. We have the Conservation Commission and this is for two full terms. Set to expire December twenty twenty six. We have Glenn Donovan, Anthony Mortini and. Both with interest in appointment, in reappointment. And then we have Catherine Swanson with interest in appointment and George Boats with also with interest in appointment.
I make a motion that we reappoint Glenn and Anthony.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, that we reappoint both Glenn and Anthony. Any discussion?
Uh, I would say we should say thank you to Catherine Swanson and hopefully she's interested in uh, joining in for some other committee.
And George.
And George.
In charge as well, yes.
Outstanding, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G two. This is Board of Fire Engineers. This is one term set to expire February twenty twenty four. And we have a recommendation made by the fire chief or Stephen Knappman.
Make a motion to appoint, am I correct in that? Uh, to appoint Steve.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to follow the chief's recommendation. What Stephen Knappman, any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G three. This is the Board of Tax Assessment Review. This is one full term. D member set to expire December twenty twenty six. We have a recommendation by the chair of the Democratic Town Committee, Eric Hasselhurst. For the nomination of Tracy Remus, the alternate member, to be appointed as the full term member and nominate Cornelia Nina Murphy as the alternate member.
Madam clerk, just for clarity, I know this is a political appointed board, so Republican slash Democrat. Is the, this recommendation, does that keep that balance there? That's in keeping?
It does, it does still keep the balance, yes.
That's what I needed to know.
To appoint both of those individuals?
So it'd be to elevate Tracy Remus to the full member and Nina Murphy as the alternate member.
So there are six, so there's three and three there then.
There's, no, there's five members on the, there's two Republicans and three Democrats. The, that follows under the charter, so those are given by recommendation by the. Committee members and when there are um. Um, expired terms, those recommendations come from the.
Party chairs.
Party chairs of that particular party. So we would still keep an alternate Republican and Democrat. It'll have two Democrat. Full members and one Republican full member, so you still um, follow the horn rules.
So why are they not even? I mean, why is like one party favored over the other?
That's how the council has appointed them previously.
Is it, is this state law that it has to be a Republican and Democrat or is that?
This is in the charter.
It's not state law?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's it's also state law as well.
Oh, it is.
That it can't be all of 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 one party. It has to be. Um, it it could be a Democrat and a Republican and an independent, but it can't be all of any one party.
But you can't do away with the language that the party chairs appoint, can you?
They nominate and then it's, well, they they provide the list and then the.
Right, I know, but I mean, can you, can you do away with that?
No, that's in state law. Unless they don't provide it, then the town council chairman can.
It just seems kind of like archaic in this day and age.
The political criteria.
Well, Andy, this, when was that law drafted? When they originally, wasn't this like back in like the nineteen fifties or something like that or?
Probably it's at least back to the general laws of nineteen fifty six.
It was when parties were a lot stronger than they are today, so.
True.
Based on the recommendation of the chair, I move that we approve, uh, that we appoint both candidates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? So we had a motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron to appoint as uh, proposed. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G four. This is the Personnel Board. This is one term set to expire December twenty twenty seven. And we have Russell O'Connell with interest in reappointment.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to reappoint Russell Connell, uh, any, sorry, O'Connell.
O'Connell.
My apologies. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G five. This is the Bristol Housing Authority. This is one unexpired term set to expire January twenty twenty five. And we have Kimberly Teves and Donna St. Angelo, both with interest in appointment.
Now, what motion do we set up on interviews for those two candidates?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to set up interviews for both candidates. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G six. This is the Rogers Free Library Board of Trustees. This is three terms set to expire January and as a typo, it's twenty twenty seven, not twenty twenty four. We have Al Woblinsky. Uh, Woblowski, sorry, twenty four Burrin Street. This is with interest in reappointment. We also have a board recommendation for his reappointment. And then as a reminder, there are scheduled interviews with Kara. Cromwell, Annie Sylvia and Carolyn Jacobus already set in play.
I would move that we reappoint Al Wobowski. Did I say that right or no? Roblowski.
I think that's what I said.
Second.
You say it better than we do, Al.
Al came in, I have to say, very impressive. Came in. Ended up being the chairperson and has kind of guided the library board through lots of changes and so thank you so much for that.
Yes, doing a great job, Al.
Thank you.
Tell me who's seconded that, please.
I'm second.
All right, so motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to reappoint Al. I'm stopping right there. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. Okay. Oh, of course I'm going to. So this is the part where I always say from this council. That we so appreciate our boards and commissions. You've heard me say it a couple of times and I don't say it enough and I'm gonna say it even more. Uh, it's, it's impressive that we get the amount of people interested. To stay interested, to give their time back to a community that we love and you love, we all love. And it is the way it is because of the efforts and energies given back from the community. So this council says, thank you. Madam clerk.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is I one. This is harbor master Messily and this is for consideration of proposed ordinance to include insurance requirements for town marina.
So I spoke with the harbor master today. We're gonna continue this item. He uh, needed to do some additional research in regard to. Um, effects of commercial fishermen, so um, we, I just need a motion to continue this to our February meeting, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I two, town administrator Contenti, and this is for consideration of the traffic calming policy. And the police department presentation. I do want to note for the record, there was a um, item received at meeting. There is a. Email response from a Joe. Bellacetrisi, sorry, from Belmont Avenue in support of.
I'm, just a side note, Madam clerk, I love this new received at meeting stamp. I think that's outstanding. It's a nice clarity. Mister Administrator, floor is yours.
Thank you. We've uh, we've been actively uh, trying to adopt uh, policy to reduce speeds mainly in residential areas. Uh, and it's been going on for a few years where uh, Lieutenant Wasney has um. Reached out to other communities, has really immersed himself in the traffic calming policies. Where traffic calming is, it's uh, engineered and physical um, changes to a roadway to slow speeds. Uh, the old theory was you set up radar and you write expensive tickets that are very difficult to pay. Um, and they're, 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 they're somewhat effective, but you have to really. Uh, be there every day to make uh, an impact and reduce the speed. So. These traffic calming uh, changes are speed humps, not the old bumps. Um, they're uh. They, what they're known as uh. They're known as like chiclets. They look like large, uh, you can drive, actually straddle them. Water can go through uh, between them.
Chiclets are good, sir, yeah, it's okay.
That's the unofficial term, I didn't want to use it when it comes up.
Is it basically that squares, like they have all over Providence?
Right, yeah.
Oh, I hate those things.
You have an uphill battle, sir.
I should say must be working.
Yeah.
Yeah, but uh, but so what we did is uh, we we tried a model area in town. And the purpose of that was to see how uh, number one, how the neighbors responded and also how the DPW uh. Was able to, for years, we said, well, we couldn't have speed humps or speed bumps because we wouldn't be able to plow the streets and there'd be drainage issues. Uh, but this same theme has been coming back year after year after year. Why can't we do speed humps? Other communities are doing it. So we did this model area. I was part of, it was, it was put out to bid as part of this year's road paving. Peck Avenue was re repaved. Which was only gonna contribute to the speeding complaints that we're getting on Peck Avenue. So we did a model area. Can it be changed back? It can, but I I'm hoping that the neighbors will get accustomed to it and they'll, and we find that the speeds are being reduced there. So, and this would be a good time also to introduce our policy. Now that we have them, you can drive down there. They were engineered. Um, so uh, they're put in specific areas uh, you know, uh. Totally by our consulting engineer where they thought would be the best areas. So there's three on this section of roadway. Um, and it's really a model area, a pilot if you would. Uh, and along with it is the policy that goes along with it, which you'll see. And I think it's chief, it's Lieutenant Wasney, it's gonna explain what the criteria would be. So, you know, this area would, again, it's a pilot. Drive down there. If residents continually to complain about speeding on their road, they could check out Peck Avenue. And then they could follow this policy, do the petition, get the required number of signatures from the neighbors, which is like seventy percent of the neighbors would have to be in favor. Police Department does a uh, a traffic study. They would have to be over a certain percentile in speeders to justify it. If. Recommendation would then go to the town council and town council will decide whether to budget and approve uh, speed humps in that area. Um, other areas that we're looking at to reduce speeds would be narrowing road uh, roadways. Um, uh, tree plantings in uh, vegetative areas at intersections. So these are things that planning is looking at. Um, but we're, we're trying to slow traffic mainly in the residential areas. Thing about speed humps is the policy in the model. Is that they would have to be in at twenty five miles per hour zone, so not thirty five, not, they don't work there. Uh, so there is a strong criteria. It's all in the policy, model policy that you have, but chief is, wanna add, or is Lieutenant Wasney?
So this just allows a resident with a uh, ongoing traffic issue to bring forward their concerns to the town. And uh, the uh, criteria would be uh. Uh, the road will need to be town maintained road. A road shall have more than one uh, traffic lane each direction. Proposed road shall have. Um, shall not have a posted speed limit. Greater than twenty five miles per hour. Proposed road shall not uh, be on a ripped up bus route. It also shall, shall not have emergency response vehicles uh, traveling. Um, in that, in that area, so it shouldn't be near a police department or by the department. Uh, traffic studies would have to show eighty five percent of speeds, uh, ten miles over the posted speed limit. And they would support a seventy percent.
I just had a question in regards to if the road is dug up for gas lines or sewer lines and things like that. And it affects one of these speed bumps, uh, will it be covered? It are curb to curb. Ordinance for say, that particular vendor would need to repair it. Put it, restore it back to its original? Or do we have to come back? Do we have to, you know, go back to the, our line item and have to repair those speed bumps?
No, that would be something we would address right in the road cut permit before they would even cut.
Got it.
We always tell them that restoration has to be complete, so if those are right where, and I don't think there are in this particular case, we looked at that. But if they had to do something that roadwork, they would have to put it back and restore exactly the specification.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Uh, Mister Administrator, from uh, just, I'm in total support of this. I think it's um. I mean, if you have ten kids living in a neighborhood or something like that and cars flying down, it can be awfully frustrating to. You know, you can even try to buy the yellow flag thing since it's probably not stopping people, so I totally get the frustration. Um, just from a budgeting standpoint, I imagine that this is just a nominal increase if we're doing a. Um, just from a budgeting standpoint, I imagine that this is just a nominal increase if we're doing a, a road.
What, what's that?
It's a little bit.
Or it is?
Yeah.
Or not, or not nominal, or?
Yeah, so it was sixteen thousand dollars. So that's the, uh, it was part of the road paving. It was over a million dollars, so over a million dollars. Uh, the, the, the speed hump portion was sixteen thousand. So that's the signage, uh, the humps themselves in the painting. Right now, when you go by there, you're going to see there's some, uh, ch- ch- uh, shadows.
Oh, chatter shadow.
That are out, that are outlined, but they have to go back, fill in weather permitting, and then put some striping on them so that they're more visible.
This is such a paradigm shift. It's, you started the, your presentation on it. This council has been told for year upon year upon year that this is not how you fix this. And I'm not talking about the chiclets, right, or just speed bumps and all of that. We've had this, how many people have come in front of us and asked us to do this and told again and again that it wasn't the right way to do it. I also am in agreement with this, and not only with the what it's proposed to do. Mary pointed out rightly that in Providence, right near the Point Street Bridge, right, there's a multitude of them.
There's a ton of them everywhere.
There's a ton of them, and it makes you slow down. Uh, if you're going too quickly, you're going to do some damage to your car.
Yeah.
Um, but as also rightly pointed out, it does not affect drainage or nominally affects drainage, right? Because the water can flow through. But Chris, could you, it looks like you were going to speak on that. Could you share a little bit more about what the changes are here? Why this, why this is okay now and it wasn't in the past?
Sure, Mister Chairman. I myself was, we, we always loved the theory of these because the problem is the old ways that we addressed this extinction would set in with the new behaviors. Once the police left, it was a draw in resources. But the issue was always vehicles that respond, emergency vehicles, public works vehicles. But these are totally different. These are not your father's speed humps. These, the angles are extremely, they're softer angles. We went out there and we evaluated this. Um, you know, drainage flows through them. They're not connected. The big trucks that we have can, can kind of straddle them. And our trash trucks are cabovers, they're the ones with those flat fronts. They're the most difficult to handle bumps of any kind, and they've, they've really tested these. And my personnel is completely satisfied that this doesn't interfere with, with our services at all. Now, when we plow, we haven't plowed on them yet, but we've looked at these. These are absolutely no, in fact, they're far less of an issue than sewer caps, than framing grate, catch basins that rise up over time. Those are far more of an issue. This should not interfere with the services we provide one bit. So we are completely in favor of it.
Interesting, you just made that comment about the service because I know we had an issue at one time on High Street. We had to remove someone because it was causing havoc with the fire trucks and, uh, the emergency vehicles. But I'm glad to see that these are a bit different in, uh, you know, as, uh, as harmful, so to speak, to the, to the vehicles.
Well, and the humps you're referring to, um, Mary, these are, uh, not quite as high. Some of those in Providence at different heights. They're, they're kind of extreme. They still have soft angles. Uh, City of Providence can work with them with their services. But some of those are extremely high. These are nowhere near like that. I would encourage everyone to take a ride.
Yeah.
Because we've sent our trucks down, and like I said, our trash trucks, which would beat up, which would handle them the hardest. I've had no issue with them. So.
I always, I always think that you'd be able to straddle it, like if you got it just right. And I don't really find that happening. It could just be my car, you know, and so trucks may be better able to do that, but, um, you know, I find them like really big, but everywhere they have them, they have a lot of them too. Like, you know, so they're like doubled up on each side of the road. I don't, I imagine that's not like this, you know? So I'll go down there. I mean, I do want to say though that I do like the, um, presentation that you put together and the plan of how people are going to, you know, um, ask for these because what we do know, as, as the chairman just said, people are going to be looking, they, as soon as the word is out that we have this ability, I can imagine every east and west street that is a long street going down, um, will be looking for this. And I think that, you know, like, is there a budget? Would we have to put some money aside for the budget? Is there some? Is it only going to happen potentially if there's a road that's going to be repaid? Like, I don't, I don't really, you know, that, that's not answered yet. But I mean, that's what I thought of, but I do think this is very clearly laid out. So.
I, yeah, I just have one more question and I'll add to the point I just did a little bit of quick math too. And I know sixteen thousand dollars might seem a lot, but if we take it over the course of an entire one million dollar project, it really is nominal. Uh, when you're considering the entire project, and I think, like, even if you think about, you know, the safety of a kid, I think, you know, sixteen thousand, you know, we would, uh, really be regretting it if, if we had unsafe roads out there. And I think, uh, it does give a lot of peace of mind to the parents and, and everything. So I think it's a small cost. But, um, with that being said, is, um, will there be criteria for removal? Um, if, if, let's say that eventually some folks want to see him removed or something, or maybe the nature of the neighborhood changes a little bit or something like that, will we have, um, procedures in place for something like that?
So you're talking about in terms of the actual removal, the protocol to, to remove them, I'm sure would be, would be a townwide decision. But in terms of how we would do it, we would just make a nice clean cut and we'd remove them almost like as if we did roadwork and we'd put in fresh mix there. So it wouldn't be an issue to remove them, the actual removal of them. The protocol for deciding that is a different story. That's something that we've done collaboratively, I'm sure.
It would seem if in front of this council for approval, it would be in front of this council for removal.
Right.
Yeah, we can add, uh, an amendment to it, uh, and add on where removal, once approved by the town council and removal would also have to be approved by the town council.
If I may, I'm just going to just reiterate really quick. There's a great, uh, flow chart here, and it says, how do you do this, right? So if, if I'm a resident and I say there's a problem on my street, I resident request a traffic calming measure, Bristol staff ensures request, uh, ensure request forms are complete and will provide neighborhood petition form. The resident circulates petition form to residents living on the street. Seventy percent approval needed to continue. So you've got to go through these steps before you get to the next one. Town conducts a two-week traffic study, uh, accident analysis and traffic flow. Uh, next step is traffic study showing eighty-five percent speeds at least ten miles an hour over the posted limit. I'd like to go back to that just in one quick second. And then it's, um, project receives approval by the town council and then funding secured to complete the project. Going back to that traffic study showing eighty-five percent speeds, I know we've done multiple speed. How often do we see speeds? And this is, I'm setting an expectation here. How often do we see speeds eighty-five percent at eight, uh, ten miles an hour or over? I'm, I'm, I ask all whoever is appropriate.
Not often when it's a residential neighborhood.
Okay.
Uh, but we did see it, as you'll see, DPW has it on their work list, you know, something the council approved with last year's, uh, fiscal year budget. You know, on Inawamsket and on Bayview, we did see those levels exceeding only because there's a longer stretch of road and it it leads into a, a major thoroughway. So in those particular areas, you will see those speed signs that you see in the other communities that congratulate you when you're at the speed limit. It'll also notify you when you're exceeding, uh, the speed limit.
It's really good.
So, uh, we, we want to also, uh, those are, are also going to be rolled out under Bayview and Inawamsket. Uh, a couple of things that I'd like to add, certainly is, um, the town administrator, uh, charged us with, you know, coming together with a comprehensive plan. And, uh, as the chief, I delegated that to Lieutenant Wasney, uh, who worked, uh, hand in glove with the administrator's office to, to try to get a product in front of the council. Uh, we have reached out as far as Texas, Florida, uh, Johnston, Cumberland, Smithfield, and looked at various policies and really tried to call it down to get it to fit what we want in Bristol. When you see it's only for a one-lane roadway, it's for a residential prima facie speed of twenty-five miles an hour. So we really looked at it to address, you know, the specific issues that we have here in, in town in Bristol. And one of the areas also is of importance is, while even though you folks agree and the police department does a study, it still goes to a licensed engineer to work on and provide that plan before we go out onto that roadway. So there are a lot of steps in this particular process to make sure that the town gets it right before asphalt is laid down, uh, onto the ground. And anything that we put down there, you'll see that the plan with the engineer has to be ADA compliant. So we've tried to fill in all of the potholes if I can, uh, uh, be cliche i- i- in that manner, but we certainly can add, if the council would like us to have a feature, if that's something that you folks would like to see uh, for removal, uh, we can, we can do that.
This is out, this was well thought out.
And, uh, I'll get that to, you know, the administrator for approval back again, if, if that's, if that's your ultimate desire.
I, I think this traffic calming policy was very thought out, um, and, um, I'm very, I feel very calm to, uh, make a motion to go ahead and, uh, approve the draft. And, uh, and also include Councilman Lay's, uh, edits, uh, to just add in, uh, addendum to on the removal of the, uh, chiclet.
I'll second.
Is that?
Second. Is there a second?
I'll second, uh, very calmly.
I just had a quick question.
Right.
And that is, when you talk about like Inawamsket, Hope Worth, although that's a little bit more hilly. Um, you know, the, the roads that are going, like Medicom to the water. How many would you put on a street? Like, you know, ma- and, and I'm not looking at this as, at the, as a financial issue. I'm just, like, would, you would have probably on any Inawamsket, is there like a standard, like every X number of feet? You'd want to do, like, you wouldn't have one. You would have probably four of them on that street in each direction, right?
Yeah, I, so we didn't, we didn't determine that. We, we, Beta Engineering has a traffic division, so they actually designed it. I, I don't know exactly how they determined it had to be three, but I know they put some calculations into it. Uh, so.
I mean, I would just be curious if somebody could find out, like, for us, just to know, like, you know, on X number of feet, like, how many you would do for it to be effective?
Yeah.
You know, um, so like, uh, in a mom's get, you know, you would probably, you wouldn't start until after the fire station.
So what I probably would recommend when you have a, a, a stretch of the road that's that long, where folks could build up their particular speed. So it could be in between stop signs where, you know, automatically they're going to be slowed down. So we probably would move the radar, uh, trailer, which measures the speed, our equipment, to a couple of different locations and take, you know, varying measurements. So on one part of Inawamsket, we could find a problem area. And then just after a stop sign or approaching a stop sign, we're not going to see those speeds. So that would help us in determining that hotspot, you know, um, that existed on that roadway, and it's, it's driven by data.
So you wouldn't really need to have, like, uh, the whole street wouldn't have to have them.
Yeah.
You know.
That's frustrating too, you know, you know, uh, you know, to have them, you know, repeated, you know, so we would really want to make sure that they were right in the hotspots.
So are most of the people stopping on the streets of their, I mean, you have, you have stop signs, and that's one thing that we have put in. And many people have come for those, requested that. Are, do people stop on those streets when they can go pretty fast? Do they stop the stop signs for the most part?
I would hope so.
I mean, no, I mean.
Mary, I hope they're stopping at stop signs.
I, I, I do believe so.
It's the time of year where we believe.
Yeah, certainly. The complaints of speeding are in between stop signs, in between intersections. It's that, you know, length of the roadway which allows the car to build up some speed, you know?
Mister Administrator?
Yeah, there, I'm not sure, but there may be members of the public that live on Peck Avenue that are here. They may be for, they may be against. Uh, there was some mixed results when, uh, when they were, uh, constructed. Um, so I'm not sure, but.
So it is, it's not a public hearing, but we routinely obviously want to hear back from the public. So if there's, is there someone that wanted to speak for or against? If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mason Brooks. I live on, uh, fifty Peck Ave. Uh, I moved to Bristol about three years ago. We bought our house. So I, I just want to go back to a couple of points that you reiterated. You said eighty-five percent of the people would have to go ten miles an hour or over the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. I live on this street. I drive a sports car. I, I couldn't even imagine driving thirty-five miles an hour down Peck Avenue with no speed bumps. That's insane. Uh, so I, I don't, I can't even recall seeing anybody drive thirty-five miles an hour down my street like prior to the speed bumps being installed, living there three years. So you know, it's just strange because part of the policy that, you know, was put together, uh, and you did a good job putting the policy together. But you put the policy together with a seventy percent approval rate. But after you railroaded Peck Avenue with speed bumps without consulting any of the people, you know, who live there. So, you know, why, if, if the policy was, was seventy percent approval rate for the street to get approval, then the speed study and all these things, shouldn't that have been put into place prior to the speed hump, bumps being, you know, installed on the street? You know, I mean, like, we just had this whole conversation about zoning boards and, and railroading, you know, uh, uh, areas of the town with, with things that the public may or may not want. And, you know, I personally don't want a set of speed bumps outside directly in front of my house. You know, if cars are stopping on them, which honestly, they're not really. You can position your car directly over them if you drive any mid-size or, or large-sized truck or sedan. You could drive, once again, I certainly wouldn't recommend driving twenty miles an hour down Beck Avenue. But you could drive forty over those speed bumps without even hitting a single speed bump. They're, they're basically useless. I mean, I, I mean, I, I can drive out of my house completely the other direction and not even hit a speed bump if they stopped right in front of my house. Um, you know, so it's just strange that, you know, there's all this thought on the council about, you know, public opinion and zoning and everything else. A policy's put into place where you need a seventy percent approval of the people on the street. But, you know, my wife and I came back from, from Italy and, you know, I saw a construction crew out there and I was like, what are you guys doing? We're installing speed bumps. For all we knew, maybe somebody pulled the neighborhood while we were out of town for ten days. I have several neighbors that I've texted, I've spoken to about this. They're furious about it. And whether they're here or not, I don't know. Uh, obviously not. But, I mean, I'm certainly not going to reiterate what they said because they use a lot of choice language. Um, you know, in their thoughts on this, this topic. So it, it's just very strange to me that if it was two families, one family, you know, that, that asked for the, the speed bumps, that the policy states seventy percent. But I, I would never send an email, a mail, a phone call, nothing. And, you know, so it's like a, a policy after the fact that everybody else in the town, street gets to vote on it except for mine. Wow, that, that doesn't seem very fair. And then you go back to the point of removing. I mean, look, I am super grateful that you guys paved our street. That street was horrible to drive down. I mean, I dreaded driving down that street every day. Actually, I used to intentionally drive my car down, I believe it's Beachmont. I got paved first. I used to drive it down Beachmont, come up Ocean Ave, and come up and around back into my house just to avoid driving down the street because of the amount of potholes and lumps and everything. Now I have a bunch of speed bumps, so I drive down Beachmont, come back up, don't drive on my street. But, you know, then you got to remove them, explain the removal process. You have to cut it out and refill it. I'm sure you guys have seen patch jobs on roads. It's not the same as a newly paved road. Those patches sink. They, I mean, there's patches all over town. So now you spent a million bucks paving the street. And when I asked, like, if the program is effective, ineffective, I was told there was a speed study. I've asked for a copy of it, haven't seen it, don't know if there was one done. I've never seen a cop write a ticket on my road. I've never seen a cop posted on my road. The only cop I've seen posted on my road was talking with my neighbor who happens to be a cop in another district. So, and I mean, I, I love the Bristol Police Force. I love all police officers, firefighters, whatever. I've never seen one write a ticket on my street for speeding.
So let's, I'm going to ask you to stop just a sec. Mister Administrator, did you want to respond to it?
No, but no, I'll agree. There was no policy when it was, uh, implemented and designed. Um, but we recognized there wasn't a policy and, uh, there was one that's been studying traffic calming for a couple of years. But, uh, again, I did, who made the decision? It was me. It was my decision as the administrator, who's responsible. Part of my job is public safety. I got complaints from your neighbors. I viewed the area. I saw children playing in the street. And I encouraged the council to drive down the same area, and I'm not going to apologize. I'm sorry you don't like it in front of your house, but I think it works. I think the majority of your residents are in favor of it. The majority of the residents in your neighboring streets are in favor of it from the information I'm receiving in the town administrator's office. When it comes to public safety, I'm not going to apologize, sir.
That's fine. You don't have to apologize.
And they are, and as far as I'm concerned, a person who ran radar for twenty years, the speed humps are working, and that's my professional opinion.
Thank you. So here's.
Can I just interject really just?
Yes, go ahead.
When.
Long sentence brief, go ahead.
It will. When I originally called the office and I asked about a policy similar, you know, to, to neighborhood approval, because I had seen in other states that have similar, um, uh, speed bump. uh, speed bump installation policies, they have, you know, a sixty percent approval, seventy percent approval. The literal direct response I got was, if we polled your street, no way it would have passed. So, I mean, I don't know what to say. So I guess it's just ironic. That's all. So.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak?
Hi, Katie Brooks, fifty Peck Ave, wife of Mason Brooks. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate all the time and the effort that went into, you know, the presentation. I think that it's very, very well thought out. Just would also like to reiterate that it's unfortunate that the neighbors of fifty Peck were not given those same opportunities. I will say that child safety is of the utmost importance. And I understand why you would not apologize, which I understand. I I know that there are kids who play on our street. I used to play in the street whenever I was a kid. I think that that's totally fine. And I think that kids should be able to do that in their neighborhoods. I would like to mention that the speed bumps surrounding the areas where the kids are in the street, they're nowhere near where those kids are. And so, like my husband mentioned, the speed bumps can be straddled and the length of street between the speed bumps, it's it's very wide. So it's very possible that people would still speed in front of those areas where the kids are playing. And so I feel like the placement of the speed bumps should have been more well thought out as far as that goes. I will say that if the neighbors were consulted prior to, we would have mentioned, hey, there are these unbuildable lots that you can place the bumps in front of. And that way people don't complain about a big ugly sign in their front yard. Or, you know, hey, you know, that's great, please put the speed bumps on our street, but put them in front of the homes of the people who requested them so that way they actually do some good. Because, like I mentioned, this space between those bumps, it's not really going to do anything if there are people who are indeed speeding on our house, on our street. Another point that I would like to mention, there is no speed limit sign on our street. There is no posted speed limit on Peck Ave. But I appreciate the time of the council. I appreciate the effort and the time that you put into the policy. I think that it is very well written. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, council. I'm Ben Cormack. I live at eighty-three Peck Ave, father of Tyler and Ryan Cormack. And we have noticed that the speed humps are, they're okay. I don't, as you said, you can drive your truck straight down the middle of them and it doesn't really slow you down. So we live maybe a hundred feet from where one of the speed humps are. And they they're kind of working, but I I do think there is room for improvement. You hop up. Sorry for the.
Hi, council. Nick Christiansen, eighty Peck Ave. A couple of little girls as well, so probably, you know, slightly on the other side of the argument here. Really appreciative of the speed bumps. There's tons of kids that play outside. And, you know, from my perspective, I think this, if you know, it was like eighty percent of the cars have to go over ten higher. It's not really like, that's actually quite a high, high bar to jump, I think. It's really like, we would only require one or two to be doing that. And we'd have a serious problem if one of our kids was was being silly as kids are. So definitely appreciate the the speed bumps. And I think the placement, you know, it's always going to be tough. I I certainly wouldn't have wanted to end them in up with one of them directly outside my house. It would be kind of just a pain. There probably were places where there are like bush, you know, unbuildable places that maybe they could have been put. That being said, you know, where where the majority of the kids start playing, there's a speed bump kind of, you know, five-second drive before that forces you to, at a minimum, have a think about what you're doing. You can definitely hit the middle and, you know, do that, but you've got to actually think about doing it, which I think has some has some merit. So, yeah, I mean, I I guess just, there is obvious, obvious negatives and, you know, I don't know if the the neighborhood was polled. We, that that kind of poll is only ever going to come in favor of speed bumps. If you have like lots of families or people that have, you know, had kids or whatever it is. It's not, you know, people that have no interest in in kind of day-to-day kids and concerns that parents just have, aren't going to kind of vote for a speed bumps. So it just, I think that's just going to be a challenge to demographics of each street. So, yeah, that's my say. I'm I'm very happy that they're there. Nothing is perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so I did have one thing I I mentioned, forgot to say, that we have actually stood outside. My neighbor has a lacrosse net and they measure the speed of the ball. And we've actually stood there on the street trying to get people to slow down with the lacrosse that measures the speed. And we're showing people the speed as they drive past, trying to get them to slow down on the road. So the kids are playing in our yard and they're playing across the road. But the speeding on the road was, I've been there for nine years, and it really has been an issue for a while that we, I have literally stood in the middle of the road waving people to slow down. So if there's anything that works, something, you know, the speed signs to put up on the road is a really good idea, something to try and get the people to slow down because, you know, as we all know, safety is paramount.
Thank you. Thank you. Chief, go ahead.
In most communities, not every roadway has a speed limit sign in a residential neighborhood. That's why when you take your operator's license, there's always a test question and everybody knows that the state law is that the prima facie speed. So in any community in Rhode Island, for anybody listening, when you are operating on a residential roadway, it is inherent in the law. You do not need to have a sign. The speed limit in every residential neighborhood in the state of Rhode Island is twenty-five miles an hour. Whether a sign is posted or it is not, an officer can enforce the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And the other question about where they end up, this is why in the policy and on Peck Ave, it's always best to leave it up to the engineers on where those humps should go into the roadway rather than the police chief or the DPW director or an elected official saying it'll go there because this is where they want, they should go where the engineers say that they're going to have the best results in in the roadway. And and that's what we applied.
Counsel.
Yes, so am I to understand that we have three of them that were installed there on Peck Ave?
There's three, there's three.
Right, no, I was looking at the map. Yeah, I just tried to figure it out. Okay, so we do have three of them there. And the the three of them was the cross sixteen was for all three of them, for the entire project of the the bomb.
So three, three, three series. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we have a motion in a second? So, but what we heard in front of us, a couple of things. I, I'm going to speak for you, Mr. Administrator. I've always found you to be a reasonable guy. And nothing was put in front or on public on a roadway that was not, wasn't done for any other reason than it would improve situation. So possibly another conversation with the administrator. I think this policy itself, no one has had objection to the policy. I'm sorry, I did hear some concerns about how high, how fast you need to go. I personally don't have objection to that. And the reason why is that I live on Fessar Ave, which is down near the bridge, right? Griswold goes from one fourteen to one thirty-six. Wow, people go fast. And we'll walk our dogs down there and the people go fast. How I know it is that police departments there, and it tends to be college kids because it's really close to the college. But that's an area where where, and there's a lot of areas in town like that. And I'm not asking for it there. I'm saying that I'm picturing what it would look like, don't, what it would look like. We had to test someplace. I'm sorry that it was, that it wasn't, but maybe there's more dialogue. I'm not sorry with that we tested, but I'm sorry that it did not, that it it was disappointing to you. I can't say, I'm trying to come, keep it nice. So I really am. So, but I think this policy in front of us makes sense. I also would suggest possibly another conversation, Mr. Administrator, if there's something else that, is there anything other that we didn't do on Peck Ave that we could do? Maybe it's something to look at. If not, if engineers have justified it and it's the way to go, then it's the, but a conversation doesn't hurt, right? So, but what's in front of this council right now is approving this policy with the amended removal.
Adjustment.
Correct. Is there any other dialogue from the council?
I have just one question that has come up. So it looks like the neighborhood petition is how you would gauge the seventy percent. Am I right? So is there going to be a document that is going, like, how would, how will the council know how many people there were? Like, are there fifty people on that street, fifty homeowners or twenty-five? And then, you know, of these, like, what are those addresses? Like, I mean, and I'm almost thinking like, I'm almost thinking like this should be thought, thought through maybe slightly differently, just as I was listening to the testimony a few minutes ago, because it seems to me that, you know, we have the name, the person, yes, but maybe there should be all of the addresses and how many people live there. And then.
With a positive or negative.
Yeah, because otherwise, how are we going to know what that is, you know? And if they're, like, if they're going to be signing, which is what you're asking them to do, which I think is good, then they maybe need to be able to check off a yes or no, but just to like put each number of, it makes it a little more complicated, but.
We have to track it somehow.
Lieutenant, did you want to respond to that?
So section D will give you the process for that. It's it's all the residents on that street and also all the residents abutting that area. And the town will determine whether it's two hundred or three hundred feet away from that area. Same thing, same.
So I can't hear, I didn't, I can't hear what you're saying.
Section D gives you the process for that. So it's all the residents on that street. And we also follow the zoning map, which is either two hundred or three hundred feet from that area.
So what I'm hearing from Councilman Pirella is more of a clarity of like, for example, if there are twenty residents on the street, should it not list all of them? Or how do we know how many are there? How do we know seventy percent was achieved, I guess, is is?
It should list all of them on that street.
Okay, and then a a yes or no, if you will, of whether they're voting, okay.
Yeah, I think this form that is here is probably just needs to be modified a little bit. That's what I'm saying.
What's in front of us doesn't have, it wouldn't have all the residents there, so. I like the clarity. I think it's an important.
It's important for tracking, yeah.
If that's going to be like one of the standards, then we would need to be able to defend it. If we, when it comes to us and we say yes, and we need to be able to say, well, here are all the people, here's all the residents of that street. And here's who said yes, here's who said no.
Exactly.
Yeah, which we don't have that right now.
We have to have that.
Good point that you guys raised.
That'll be provided by the town. All the addresses, all the residents on that street and all the residents in that area.
So, so what I, what he's saying, it says area of influence. So it's the same, it would be the same radius that we use when notifications are made up for zoning variances. I don't know if that, in Italian, was it two hundred feet or? Okay, so we would use the same notification policy that we use for zoning notices. And in addition, everybody on that street would would have, no, they would have one, one vote or one.
One per residence, correct.
One per per residence.
So when it came in front of this council, this council could see that there are, for example, thirty affected parties, right, thirty affected residents. And of those thirty, these are the votes which made a total of seventy percent or whatever it ended up being, right? Is that what you're saying? Did I get it?
No, because I don't understand what you're talking about, about the radius like you have for other things, like, is it people who are on the street that are going to be impacted or is it the entire neighborhood? So you go to Mason Farm, is it all a Mason Farm or is it going to be Michael Drive?
No.
Like, you know what I'm saying? Like, something like that, like, what, what, I thought you guys said it's going to be this number of people on the street that are impacted.
My, that was my understanding, that it was just the people on the street that are going to have, would be notified of a yes or no of whether they wanted that speed bump or not. And based, if we meet, reach that seventy percent success marker, then it would go to the next phase. But if it doesn't, if it falls below that, then we would not, we would hold it and not move forward. That's my understanding.
It could also affect streets in that area that are that are coming off this 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 street. So that's why we also include the two hundred or three hundred feet from that area.
So, so in a Wamskett, you're going to have, if you were going to be doing that and you did two hundred feet, you would have a good a quarter at least or half of each of those side streets. That's a big.
That's right. Include, so it includes the side streets.
That's a lot.
Okay. There's a lot of people.
Because the people use the side streets when they're avoiding.
I don't think that's the intention of the policy. So if you lived at one hundred in a Wamskett, we would draw that circle around that. That would be the petitioner who would come to town hall, fill out the request for this, to initiate this particular process, to take the whole entire street, a mile of street, and then to go two to three hundred people. It would take us a half of a year to, you know, to garner consensus to do that. So if a homeowner lived at X and they had a concern, and that's where we would focus our traffic study on, that's where we would focus our concern for the petition. We certainly could put a box, a couple of boxes, I approve or I disapprove of the process. So when the council glances down that particular radius, they would know and see who approved it and who disapproved it.
So the apprehension that you're seeing is what's happening is that Ina Wamskett is, poor Ina Wamskett, they didn't do anything, right? So Ina Wamskett is being used as an example. It's a large street. If someone on the top of Ina Wamskett, wherever whatever top means to you, wants it, then the people at the bottom are affected by it without a vote, right? Is that what ends up happening? And that's, that's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but that that wasn't the intention. The intention was everyone, every resident on that street and then the radius around those homes. That's what it was. So your, to your point, Ina Wamskett is a long street. Those are a lot of notifications. But we do it through, we do it through mail. We do.
And then your point is additional to the whole street is that the affected in a, draw a circle around it. So you would be, you would be surveying more than just the street affected people. So 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 affected people could weigh in and give their opinion and vote on it.
They're affected.
That makes a lot more.
They have to travel or they may have increased traffic due to the speed humps on that street. There may be an avoidance of them. So the neighboring, we have to encompass some of the neighbors also.
Gotcha. Okay.
But it would be the whole street. It wouldn't be fair to one, one, one area.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I I just think that we need to know what the base number is and and have it like documented, like of whatever number of people it is, so that we have an idea when it comes to us and are able to defend the process. That's, that's basically the math.
When we send out notices for like any type of zoning notice or a butters notice, we print the radius map with a list of every single homeowner within that, that radius, and it's not duplicated. So you'll be able to see how many people those, is it letters or they just have to get the petition signed by those? The town has, and town sending letters to those.
Tom would send a letter.
They're going to send a letter, but you need their their approval, what you're saying. So seventy, if there's a hundred people, seventy-one have to say yes, right? So all I want to know is, okay, here are the hundred people at a glance, and this is the seventy-one or seventy-five or sixty who said yes or no, you know? Because otherwise, in where they live, so otherwise, how are we going to know? Like, you're going to tell us, well, there's a, there's, it was a hundred people and twenty-five said, like, when you, like, the example that you mentioned, I know how that process goes, the radius, except that's to notify them. And then you list a hearing, like, if you want to come and be heard about this petition for zoning or planning, you can come to the meeting. That's not exactly what they're asking here. They're asking like, is there even a case to be made? Because it would be, under this rule, seventy percent would be saying yes. Do you know what I mean? So that's, I mean, I I don't think it's a big pro, I think it's easily fixed. It just needs to be like redesigned maybe a little bit.
So this, this, this was good. What we could do is we'll, we'll incorporate some of the suggestions. We'll look again at the the eighty-five percentile. And we'll be a little bit more clearer on our intention with the notification, how that process will actually work. And then we'll come back with another, another draft. And again, I want to go back where I came in at the beginning with this introduction. For many years, it's been very difficult to explain why speed humps don't work. Nobody wanted to challenge the establishment on, and and change it. You can see, certainly see why. It's not easy. But I think we need to give it a chance, let them stay there for a while. And and let's see if we become accustomed to them and let's see if they work. But again, I I I'm not going to. But again, I, 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 I'm not going to apologize for making a public safety improvement. Um, you know, and I think it's, I implore you to, to keep the speed humps there. Uh, and let's, let's, let's see how they work over time.
So are you asking?
Excuse me, so are you asking for this council just to continue to our next meeting and come back or?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion right now to approve. So, and that was made by Tim, seconded by Tony, and there was discussion. So, Tim, I would ask that maybe you could, uh, make a motion to continue to our next meeting?
Yep, and my motion to continue this, uh, to the January seventeenth meeting.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated. And we'll get clarity on the things that have already been talked about and anything else that comes up. Any other discussion?
Just, I was going to say to the administrator, there's some wonderful, uh, tools out there. Like, I'm thinking like Survey Monkey and other areas that we can quickly reach out to those residents to kind of get a, a, a survey. You know what I mean? To get it out in front of them rather than having to wait for paper and a notification. So I think there's a way, uh, that Councilwoman Perella is talking about to, to make it a nice, clean, streamlined process for approvals.
Any other discussion? Thank you all for the efforts and the feedback. It's appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I three. We have Director of Parks and Recreation, Lauren Resenhousen, and this is regards to an update on the stage project.
Lauren, good evening. Eric.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, all right.
We're getting there.
Eric, if, uh, if you could put up the, uh, we have a little visual for you.
Oh, boy.
So where we're at right now in the process is that Bruce Thornton has, um, just waiting for the amended CRMC, uh, application, the first one. Uh, we had the approval on, but then we had to move the location because of, uh, the state building officials, uh, concern about being in the flood zone. So, um, we're going to show you where the current spot is. Uh, as of this morning, I had a meeting with the DM who was, uh, behind it, uh, with the new location. Had also, um, sent in their approval on the move to the state building and the CRMC. So I guess we're having technical
You are tap dancing very nicely.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so here we go. Um, I don't know if you can make that a little bigger there, Eric, possibly. I know I can't see that all that well, but you, you'll see the, uh, it's basically the old horse field, uh, down at the beach, the last field on your left. Uh, and you'll see that the, uh, stage, I don't know if you can move your mouse around it there, see it right there? Is, um, moved up a bit. It was originally down closer to the Walter Burke, um, drive. Uh, but we had to move it away from there because it was in the flood zone. Um, it was, uh, fifteen feet inside the CRMC. Um, that's why we had the CRMC approval in the first place, because it was just fifteen feet. But they did approve it and then, uh, the building, state building official said it was in the flood zone. So that's the location that it's going to be at. If you want to move to the next slide. So this, uh, that's the visual, um, of what it's going to look like. Um, it is made by Cedar Forest Products, which is, uh, the same company that the state parks use, uh, throughout the state. As far as their structures, you see one in Cold State Park now, that new pavilion area. Um, so that sort of made it easier to get the DM approved, um, the, uh, the, the style of it. Uh, in the back there is a little closet maintenance type thing that's going to house all the electrical outlets. Uh, I mean, um, panels and all that stuff. Next one, please.
It's tough to get an idea of how tall that is.
It is tough and the height, I, I cannot remember. It's about a twenty-four by forty-two foot, um, base.
Okay.
But the height, I do not remember off the top of my head.
So if I were standing on the stage?
Yep, it's going to be probably the, the, because it's pitched, um, it's probably going to start at like, say, ten feet and maybe go up to about fifteen off the top of my head.
Okay.
It's a slight pitch so that we don't have to worry about, uh, snow damage and all that kind of stuff just sitting on there. Um, so that red outlined area there, part of the, uh, part of the agreement with the DM is that we had to, along the tree line there, with the back end of that, uh, the top of it is the soccer field side, the three soccer fields, the teardrops. Um, we have to put a gravel road in there to go up to midpoint where the telephone poles sort of separate. Uh, where the back end and the, the gate that goes into state, the state park is. Um, just because we use it for overflow parking for events and stuff and during rainstorms and stuff, it just, it gets all worn out. So they wanted us to put a gravel roadway there up to the midpoint where the actual telephone poles that are lying on the ground separate it.
Just so we're all in the same, we're all on the same page. So the left-hand side of what we're looking at right now is
The Walter Burke Drive.
Walter Burke Drive, keep going, is the snack shack, if you will, right?
You're going up, yes.
Okay, all right.
That's, I'm sorry, that, that's inaccurate. That's an old map, the, the stage isn't it?
No, the stage is the wrong location, but that's showing the drive.
Okay.
Because they did update it, but this is a, an old part of the plan that had that. So I just wanted to pull, so you saw the, uh, the driveway, uh, I mean, the roadway. Next one, please.
Lauren, the, uh, the stage would be able to do the Philharmonic. I'm thinking about last night. It can, it's going to definitely be wide enough. Air, the area of that stage is going to be
Do you want to cover that?
Yeah, I'll cover that. I, I've been communicating with the Philharmonic and we have a tentative date, uh, the Sunday before Labor Day to come back.
No kidding?
It's not inked yet and obviously we'll, we'd have to budget for it. But taking the stage rental out of the equation, I think we can get the last night concert back and they're willing to come back. We've shown them, uh, photos, uh, not photos, the schematics of the stage. They like it, there's enough room for them. And the great thing about this location is when you pull onto that gravel road, you're going to go into the separated secondary field. That's where the accessible parking spaces will be right next to the, uh, spectator area. And also the Philharmonic staff, which we always had trouble accommodating them for their parking, they can park there also.
Nice. Steve, you just made my night, thank you.
There you go. Eric, Eric, that's good enough. Um, so the, so the next steps right now, uh, as I said, is, is, uh, waiting for the CRMC approval on the amended application, which shouldn't be an issue. DM's on board with it. The state building officials already approved it. So the next step is the, the bidding process, um, for the cement work and the electrical work and the, the earth work. Um, you know, through the MPA, we're going to be able to purchase the, the, the stage. And, um, just this afternoon, I, I, uh, I got word tentatively, I'm waiting for a final approval. But the hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from the, uh, Rhode Island Commerce that came from the, uh, the COVID relief funds. Um, we just needed them to, because of, of the expiration of the grant money, we, we asked that we transfer the original allocations from earthwork and stuff, because we're not going to get it done in time, to actually the purchase of the stage. So we can get that done, store it, and then have that money set aside and not lose that money, which obviously we do not want to do. So I should hear, uh, an affirmative from them by tomorrow, um, with the replies that I gave them today. So again, we just wanted to give you the update that we're shooting to have this all ready by, uh, by the summertime.
Outstanding.
Excellent news.
So I just have a quick question, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Just a quick question. We, we've talked already about how from a budgetary standpoint, it's better to have this. We can have last night and everything like that, whereas before we had to cut that out of the budget and everything. Um, there's some other reasons why this is a really good space too, where they imagine that there's some public safety considerations and things like that by having, um, this over there. Can you just talk quickly about that? I, I think we've gone over it before, but, uh, I'd just like to be reminded a little bit about, uh, those reasons.
Well, I don't, I don't want to, uh, dismiss Independence Park as being a great location and Fourth of July committee, they can, sure that they may continue to have their concerts there, but, um, if they decided to move to, uh, the Town Beach Complex, there are benefits to it. It's a more controlled environment. It's not in a, a, a settled area. Uh, and as far as parking, um, it's much safer, it's further away from any, uh, roadway. Um, and, uh, you know, this facility is there, restaurants. Um, and again, what the plan would be to fill the adjacent crossfield with the accessible parking and that would be the performance. And then the Town Beach parking lot would be the lot, first lot to fill. The second would be the overflow lot, the gravel lot behind the baseball field. And then the Quinta Gamelin parking lot, and then the overlook at Cold State Parks, there's a great deal of parking. Uh, but mainly, I think to answer your question, it's not in a settled area. Um, it's a little bit more of a controlled area. Uh, there aren't buildings around it. Um, and it's a little bit easier to monitor rather than, uh, that settled area to have a venue like that.
But it's not the intention that the Fourth of July is necessarily moving to that location.
No, no, not at all. The invitation is there, uh, but no, we have plenty of programs at recreation. Uh, in fact, they, they want to put a, uh, an outdoor movie screen in there for this.
So that is in the plans to be able to have, uh, outdoor movies there. Uh, it, we have a sound system that's going to be a part of, of the bid package as well as a, a screen. Um, so that people can bring their chairs and blankets and families can enjoy movies there. And, um, we can have our, some, we, we did test the water, so to speak, on our own, uh, this year with a, uh, a concert. After the Concession on the Common ended, um, and it was very well attended. Um, and, uh, we had the, the clam shack run by Peter Squadrito at the concession stand, uh, open. Um, past the, uh, the, the, his normal, we asked him to come in one extra week to, uh, to provide refreshments. And it went very well. He had clam cakes, he had chowder, uh, so it opened up a little bit, uh, of a different thing for him as well.
Our meeting started very early tonight. I'm really hungry right now. Okay, outstanding. This is good stuff. So you just did, so this was to inform this council and the public about the progress that you're making.
Yes.
Lauren, thank you for all your hard work. I'm going to make a motion to receive and file.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, receiving file. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is I four, and this is the Director of Parks and Recreation, Lauren Resenhousen, and this is in consideration for recreational facility fee amendments.
So, Mr. Chairman, it, it, basically, I'm just trying to, a- as I did before, I'm trying to update some things, uh, we did with the beach fees last year. And, uh, you know, the fees for some of our other facilities are very, uh, have not been changed in many, many years. Um, so some of it is for just clarification. Um, I'll start with the pavilion rental. Uh, currently it just says fifty dollars. There is no time limit, so somebody could come in and, and rent the pavilion for as long as they want for fifty dollars as a resident and a hundred dollars for a non-resident. So I'm just trying to set a time limit now, leaving the rates the same, but putting a two-hour time limit in there.
Before we change it, I'd like to rent it. Go ahead.
So, yes. Just on that point, so that's two hour block, understood. You certainly want to set some parameters. However, that's what the person says, I really need it for three hours.
So it would be prorated, so it would be seventy-five for three hours.
Okay. Keep going.
And go, and, and so forth. So, uh, and then the volleyball court, um, again, there's, uh, there's no time limit. Um, it just says zero dollars for a Bristol resident, no problem. Uh, twenty-five dollars for a non-resident. So again, we're trying to get it as, um, uh, a, a two-hour block. I mean, anything after that, it's almost like a tournament, right? So, uh, and the other thing that I wanted to strike, uh, in, in the bottom there is there's a ten-dollar deposit is required for the use of volleyball, which will be returned. I, I, I don't think we need to be giving out volleyballs. Um, it, it's tough. Uh, no one's approached us during the two years now that I've been here to, to ask for volleyball. They all come with their own. Um, and I think just trying to keep them on, onsite and have my staff trying to check them out and then get it back. You can't even buy a volleyball for ten dollars. Ten dollars deposit, that could go out the window and you wouldn't see it anyway. And we spent thirty dollars to replace it. So it doesn't make sense to, to, to even give them out at this point for that, uh, that price. Uh, moving right along on to the fields. Again, I just trying to make us, uh, a little bit more, uh, competitive, uh, lights for after hours, uh, after dark. Uh, we're charging currently twenty-five dollars and, uh, you know, the cost that they are, I think fifty dollars. It, it could be up to a three-hour block at that point, depending on what time of year they're playing. Uh, so twenty-five, twenty-five dollars, I just don't think covers the, uh, the expense of all those lights that are down there.
Is this applicable to the current youth groups that we have in place, like Bristol Utsaka and?
If they want to have a practice, then you're using the softball field. So yes, uh, they would, if they want to have a practice at night, then yeah, that, those fees would be there. So um, and then the fields themselves, uh, you know, in, in my memo that I wrote to, you know, it came to our attention this, this past season because a group of Tividens softball group had, uh, reached out and had a tournament here. Um, and they were totally shocked by how much we were charging for the field, because we were like a hundred dollars less per field per day than anywhere else in the state that they, uh, they play that. So they jumped on the chance to play this year and, and it just sort of rang, rang our bell to try and do a little research. And, and it is, we are under, um, undercharging for those fields as far as we're concerned. So, um, we, we've just put a slight increase in all of them. Uh, twenty-five, fifty dollars per, per field. Uh, and, and as it stands, fees are per day, uh, opposed to per game. And we'll adjust that going forward once we see how this, uh, how this plays out. So that's what I'd like to propose for changes.
So we, we charge all the little league teams?
No, we, we, we would charge a little teams if they wanted to use the men's softball field after hours in the dark to have a practice or a game, because, you know, they don't have
Soccer and everything else is all just, that's what I always thought.
Correct, no, that, to, for their regular games, unless they're running a tournament with a bunch of teams from out of state, out of town, then there's no fee for, for the Bristol youth leagues.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. So what's in front of us is, is amending, if, if we agree with these changes, then we just, this is not by ordinance, correct? Am I right? It, it is by ordinance?
This is not on the schedule?
That's in chapter eleven of the town ordinance, it's out the fees and, under the fees. Uh, so it's not done by resolution.
The top ones, uh, is chapter eleven, and then the bottom ones for the fields, the chapter eighteen.
Yeah, so
It's just a proposal on pitch.
So for clarity, it would require a change.
In the ordinance, so the solicitor would draft an ordinance for that first reading, uh, January seventeenth, second reading, February seventh.
Okay.
So moved.
So you're going to what's in green?
Hold on, one second, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, I'll second that.
Discussion, go ahead.
I just wanted to be clear, you're proposing what's in green.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah.
And what's FU F mean?
It's a field use, uh, facility use fee.
Okay.
That's been on the books since, I don't know, what, you know, sometime during Walter's term.
Okay. Is there any reason, and I'm not going to open up a new discussion, don't worry. Is there any reason why we shouldn't just move this out of ordinance? So when adjustments are like this, instead of having, having first and second reading and all of that, advertise it, advertise it correctly, have discussion about it, but then take action on it. So I'm going to, if we could make it as part of the motion that we, um, explore removing this from ordinance. So we have a few things that we've done that on, uh, including harbor fence, right? So it's made it, it's made it much easier for moving forward.
I'm all for it.
All right, move it to the schedule fees, that's really what it is.
So we had a motion and a second to refer to the solicitor to draft and update the ordinance and explore removing it from ordinance requirement. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. These seem reasonable. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I five. This is Good Energy, and this is in regard to the electricity supply selection process.
Good evening, Patrick. Hey, good evening, Council. Patrick Roach, Good Energy. So I was going, there's a, there's a recommendation memo in your packet, uh, tonight about the electricity aggregation program. I'm just going to say a few words about that and then happy to take questions. So, uh, just as background, we're talking about the Bristol Community Electricity Program. And that program, uh, would affect the supply cost of electricity in town. And the town developed a plan, um, that plan went up for public review. And then that plan was submitted to the state's Public Utilities Commission. And in like late October, the Public Utilities Commission approved that plan. So now you're at the phase where you can move towards finding an electricity supplier. And then we could actually get, you know, a start date and actual prices to, to begin power, you know, flowing for, for the community. So, uh, over the last month or so, we've worked with staff, primarily Director Williamson here, on talking about the, of the approach to, uh, to procure a supplier. And what we've put in the packet is sort of a joint recommendation. And the, the summary of that is to, um, we would recommend pursuing, implementing the program with what's called a managed load contract. we would recommend pursuing implementing the program with what's called a managed load contract. And this is what the other seven communities in Rhode Island who are operating electricity aggregation programs are doing right now. It's part, they're doing it as part of a buying group. And this approach, you work with a single supplier and they have a sort of diversified purchasing strategy where they purchase over time and then you average those purchases together to get a fixed price. And what's nice with this approach is that you have the flexibility to determine how long do we set that price for? And this flexibility, we feel, is really valuable, particularly given the last the energy markets of the last couple of years where we've seen dramatic volatility between winter and summer prices. The ability to be have this flexibility with your supplier to make adjustments to the how long you're fixing a price for can be really helpful to make sure that you're staying competitive with the utility rates. And that and and that flexibility also lets you change some variables. For example, you could increase or decrease the amount of renewable energy you wanted, which would could affect your price. You have some flexibility, which we think can be really helpful in in remaining price competitive. And what the what the memo suggests is that the managed load product, the the way to move forward with that would be to look to negotiate a contract with the supplier, Nextera Energy Services. They're the one that the Rhode Island Buying Group is using. What we basically said in there is that they're the only supplier who's offering that product, especially essentially that product is more work for a supplier, and so they need a really big group of of load to do that for. So so they're kind of the the game in town, but they've been doing great so far. And what we would, they'll have a year of delivering savings for those seven communities. And what we would be sort of looking to the council for, based on this recommendation, is is guidance for us to work with staff and and the solicitor to go and negotiate that contract with Nextera to bring that back before the council for your approval. And that would cover a few, a few things. So you'd be the first community to join sort of the buying group in this approach. So we'd want to see all the specifics of what what does that entail? All of the other communities were promised that their price at launch would be lower than the utility price at the time. So we would expect a similar kind of commitment. And we'd be looking at, you know, what what what's the term of the contract and all of those, all the the sort of gory details of there that so we would work with the with the solicitor and staff and then have that come back back before you. So and and effectively, also, just so you know, the 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 current buying group's contract with Nextera that expires at the end of twenty twenty-seven, so we'd probably, you'd probably be expecting to see a a contract with them with a term that that is co-termless with that. So that's really the short summary of what's what's in there. And if if we did this, we'd probably be looking at a launch in about May, I think, which would give, you know, lot, plenty of time for Nextera to make those purchases to build up your your price, but also plenty of time for us to design and prepare the education and outreach that's going to have to happen to make sure everyone is aware of this before it launches and has the opportunity to to opt out. So, yeah, with that, I'll.
Can I just ask, if I remember correctly, if we don't like the price, we can still not move forward, right? We can just wait another time or or whatever. Am I correct?
So I guess what we're recommending now is is that you you do move forward to to launch the program. And the way the managed load product works is it's not like we get, we, when you're signing the contract, there's a, there's a price, it's going to be this price on this day. Essentially, signing that contract says we are going to launch the program, and in this case, supplier can start executing its purchases. So we won't know the exact price at that time, but we would look for a commitment from the supplier that it will be lower than the utility at launch.
So I, did I not hear, let me make sure I heard you correctly. You're asking us to commit without knowing what the price is?
We, yeah, for the the way the the managed product that works is the supplier has to go out and start making those purchases, which will become once averaged together, will become the price. So they physically can't tell you what the exact price is, but, and this is what the other seven communities did. They made sure that their contract had a commitment that it would be lower than the utility price at launch.
By how much? I'm sorry.
I think they had, it was, was it a dollar per megawatt hour, which would be, I guess, at a minimum, a tenth of a penny lower, but it ended up coming in a cent lower when they launched. But their their incentive is, they're they're incentivized to get it as low as possible.
Can you just, just, just so I can make sure I understand it, so a cent lower, just to use that example, if I don't know, the average user, I guess there is no average user, right? Get three hundred dollar bill in the summer because of air conditioning and all the other things that you're doing. What would a cent mean as a savings to someone like that?
Let's see. So, yeah, when the programs launched this this past year, I think Rhode Island Energy was at about ten cents and the programs were at about nine cents. So that was the one cent difference. So if you're, you know, I guess that was probably on a, just trying to, yeah, that one cent over. Yes, depends how many kilowatt hours are in your.
I know I'm asking.
But we're probably talking, you know, per month, we're probably talking, you know, that was probably ten to fifteen dollars, maybe something like that.
I apologize. It was my understanding that this was, our next step was, we were going out to bid, finding out what it was and then saying yes or no. And maybe I misunderstood it. I apologize. So it sounds like you're asking us to move forward not knowing the price and what and and what happens if we don't like the price?
So what we're, what, yeah, with the with the memo, so the the key here would be that we we bring back a contract with enough safeguards in it that you feel comfortable. And the the, I guess, the 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 things that we would at a minimum have would be some sort of commitment that it is lower than the utility price, which is generally the, we wouldn't want to launch a program if it was raising prices off the bat. But we we believe thi- this is our recommendation from an approach standpoint that this is the purchasing approach, which will have the best likelihood of keeping your prices competitive and and lower than the utility over time. So 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 if if in in this case, if there was, you know, the key is that people can always opt out of the program at any time. So on an individual level, they're never, you know, people do not have to participate. But the the key, I can understand how it is a little strange to say, wait, we we don't know the price. So but we feel particularly strong in bringing this recommendation, given both the track record that this approach has had in Rhode Island, but also given the way the utility purchases, which is in a similar kind of diversified approach as well as that volatility that we've seen, we we think this kind of hedged or managed approach is really the the way to go.
So so Patrick, you're asking us to allow you to work with our solicitor to negotiate a contract that would say you can't purchase anything unless it's a certain amount below the standard last resort kilowatt hour is what you're saying. So we don't know the price, but what we're doing is we're saying you're not going to be negotiating anything that's below a certain price, right? That's the standard offer price out there.
Right.
So we don't know what the standard offer price is going to be, right? So that's why we would have to say it have to be below a certain amount of a future price, maybe, that we don't know yet, right?
Exactly. So so the the supplier is taking a little bit of a risk themselves. They're saying we're going to go implement this strategy and we're committing that we are definitely, we're not going to, they're not going to launch this program unless that price is lower than what people would be paying with the utility at that time. Yep.
So if we work on a contract, then we, once that contract comes back, we'll get to review it first, go through it, kind of, and and then we would move forward.
Yeah, that that's exactly it. Yep.
Okay, okay. Chairman, it sounds like it's just, we, next step would be a contract to review.
See, I I'm sorry, I, my expectations this evening was, I I thought we were, for example, going out to bid, right? And and when you come back with those, we can say, yes, this makes sense. This is attractive enough to the heavy lift that goes along with this and informing all the residents of the changes and opting in and opting out and possible savings, such and so forth. But I didn't, it did not, it was not my understanding that we were going to commit and then see what it is. So that's a concern for me. I'm sorry. So but I'm happy to be, you know, if I'm missing something, I want to know more.
Are we committing to anything except reviewing a contract or are we saying, yes, we're going to accept that contract?
No, you're not committing to anything. That contract's going to come back before you for review. So, yep.
But is it, we we won't know the numbers until we sign the contract. Is that right?
Right, until the sign in the contract will allow them to go start making those purchases to to create the that price.
And then we commit with those parameters. So for for example, you said the only way we're going to, we'll say yes if it's one cent or less, just to give an example. Is that what you're saying?
Right, exactly, exactly. So yeah, yeah, exactly. So I think that is, that's, yeah, that's where our recommendation's coming coming into and and yeah, effectively, no, I think I'll just summarize there. I can understand where you're where you're coming from of thinking about the bid. I think what what we also tried to illuminate in the memo is that there is, there is, you know, you could go out to bid and get prices, fixed prices. It's like, this is the price for this fixed time. We don't believe, it's not our recommendation, that is the best approach to do right now. For a couple of reasons. One is is that the way the utility purchases is in this sort of hedged strategy. And so as we try to compare to them, that's what people are always comparing against. Having having a similar purchase strategy will make sure that we generally stay closer to them. But also, as we mentioned, with the with the volatility in the market, picking picking a price that's going to be rigid and fixed for a set period of time. We may win big at some times, but we may also lose big sometimes. And so we think that that's not really the the right approach. Or at least from our our recommendation, we don't believe that's 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 a more risky approach at this.
And you're saying versus the what the managed, the managed load price, we can adjust and change every six to twelve months, depending on how markets, we have like a little bit more market flexibility.
Exactly. And, yes, exactly.
Okay, so there's fixed. My colleagues, we all have an option to go out to bid and look at those prices, but that ties us into a very fixed cost, which we could win and we could lose versus working on a contract on the managed load, which would give us that six to twelve months sort of flexibility to kind of look at that kind of contract, gives us more wiggle room to, as you're saying, we could do more renewables or if it's turning that renewables aren't giving our residents the savings we're looking for, we could switch into another sort of, I want to say it's a mutual fund, but it's more like a, it's different, different energy sources.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And I would say this is, we were initially when the buying group went out, we were pretty thrilled that that supplier was was able to offer the managed product because you do get some of the larger, typically it's sort of larger larger loads that attract this entire entirety of Cape Light Compact. All of Cape Cod has been doing this kind of approach for probably doing it for seven years now, I think. There there's a number of large groups. So it's, it's, I think we were glad to see that kind of attention being paid and and brought to it because it is, it is more work for the supplier, but it has a lot of upsides, we think, for the individual communities.
Yeah, well.
Have you changed your perspective on this? I mean, I'm just curious, is when, you know, this has been, we've, we've been hearing about this for what, maybe like a year and a half, two years? And has your view on, because I thought we would and I knew that my head was, I was saying that we could still get out of it. And that's why I asked you. But we can just not sign a contract. But has your view on how you're recommending the buying power changed somewhat over this last year or two?
I think, I don't, I don't think so. I think, I guess what I've said is, over time, we have now seen this approach actually in action in Rhode Island. So we've been watching that, seeing how has it gone? So in that sense, we've, we've been watching that to see, and that's been, we've been very pleased with how that's worked out. So that's good. And from a buying power standpoint, I think, yeah, we've also been, we've been glad to see how that that buying group of over, you know, a hundred thousand accounts buying together has been able to perform. So I think we've been, I guess, kind of confirmed a lot of the the initial reasons we recommended that buying group go with with that approach seem to be being borne out, I think.
And we'd be, we'd be going in with all the other communities in Rhode Island that are doing, how many, there's what, seven others that are already in this program?
Right now, yes.
And so I know Providence, Barrington, Warren is now. So we would be going into those groups?
Yeah, not Warren yet.
Not Warren yet? Okay, Warren's been.
Yep, Portsmouth, Central Falls, South Kingstown, Newport.
Newport went into it?
Yep, Barrington, and then Narragansett.
Narragansett, yeah.
Yep.
And then how many new sites are there? Like, you know, like in a year, will there be fourteen?
Fourteen, fourteen what?
Fourteen communities or like, how many are in the?
Yeah, there are.
In the hopper right now, just playing on it.
Probably in the next like six months, probably only another one or two. Middletown is before the PUC as well. But then we're starting to work on plans with North Kingstown. Westerly is about to select, they're starting their process. So I think within a year, you know, hopefully another four or five maybe might get through the PUC, but a little, little unclear. A lot of, a lot of folks are just at the initial starting stage.
Yeah, I do have a question. And you're basing the, to go out to negotiate, you're basing on the number of residents in in the personal community? Is that what you're using for a number?
Yeah, we do have the the amount of eligible load. So the amount of, the amount of load that is being served currently. So that's what the supplier would be looking at. But the nice thing about these contracts is there's no, there's no minimum load or maximum load. So we are, we are using that, but there there isn't any sort of like penalty for using too much or too little or anything like that.
And this would be applicable to residential, not commercial, correct?
Commercial would.
Would be included?
Yep, yep, exactly. And I would say most commercial, a lot of commercial compared to residential already have their own supply contracts. So they'd be welcome to join, but they wouldn't be eligible for that automatic enrollment. So we wouldn't be taking anybody's supply choice away from them if they've already made it, importantly.
Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to move forward to take a look at the contracts. So I'll make a motion to work to have Good Energy work with the solicitor on that contract. And I think we need, and I would, I, it sounds like the managed load program would be the best program to go forward with the town. But this does not in any way commit us or the residents to any electrical like or energy sourcing at this point. We are not, we have not signed that contract. We're just, we're just looking to move, you know, get a contract created.
I'll second it for discussion.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, as stated discussion.
Yes, I would just like to ask the administrator, who's going to be the point of contact to work or staff that will be working with the with the Patrick? Oh, with the energy, let's say we go forward. I'm sorry, I'll take that back. You know, if we go forward and we agree to, you know, contract with someone, obviously, we have to have a point person in the staff. Am I correct?
I know Diane, Director Williamson isn't making eye contact with me, so I think she knows that.
I know Diane, Director Williamson isn't making eye contact with me, so I think she knows that.
I I I was wondering in what specific capacity? I mean, I've been working with Patrick on the plan, and I think it's expected that I'll work with him on the outreach to the residents. But anything, you know, contract, pricing, I think would probably be more the solicitor's office than maybe the finance finance department. So I guess I just, I just didn't know in what capacity you were thinking.
I mean, if if somebody wants to opt out, there has to be a point of contact, someone to contact to work through. Right? My, go ahead.
If I could answer, yeah, I think we always want to have somebody at town, you know, who who is kind of a point of contact. But basically, when the program's up and running, and even before, all the, all the materials are getting people to 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 us effectively. But we do want to make sure that if calls come to Town Hall, people know where to go and then how to get it over to us or the supplier. But effectively, the workload, we try to take all that on for the customer support and that kind of stuff.
Any other discussion?
So I'm, I want to be clear. So if if we move forward, we are saying that we want to explore the contract. We are not signing the contract. We're not committed. We're just exploring this. But for us to find out what the actual savings are, we have to sign the contract. And another thing is that you, Tim, as part of your motion, you mentioned that it sounded like managed load was the way to go. Your words a couple of times were, we liked it. We thought it was beneficial. I'm paraphrasing, but something along that. When you say that, do you mean your company or the people buying the electricity?
That's a good question. I think, so our professional opinion as your consultant is that we like that approach. We recommend that approach. Yes, I would separately say that the people buying electricity, the customers so far in these towns, I think they have had savings. So I can't speak for them, but I think it's delivered on what they expected. They got cleaner power that was also cheaper.
And could you show this counsel at at when we're going through contract, considering signing it, what what an actual difference between a managed load and committing to a particular price would have been? So we now have history and you could look at what it was versus what it is. Can you show that to us? And 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 see if there's, what is the difference? So and I don't pretend to get into the finer points of this, so I'm happy to be educated on it.
Yeah, I think I could actually maybe just talk to it a little bit right now. So over the last year.
No, I mean, real numbers, like, you can do that. Great.
Well, so, yeah, so over the last year, last, so the utility rate changes every six months. So the summer rate was, it was like 10.3 cents, for for example, and the winter rate that we're in now is 17.7. So big fluctuation. And in the past, it was more, it, that fluctuation was was a lot less. If we go back a few years, it was, you know, maybe, maybe eight cents to 10 cents when, but we really, for the last couple of winters, we've seen that really big delta. So if the communities had done the sort of single point in time, fixed price, depends how long they would have locked it in for. But they probably would have been locking in a price that was, you know, somewhere in the 13s, maybe. So they they probably, you know, compared to the summer price, they would have been, you know, three cents above, four cents above. They'd also be three or four cents below now, which is great. But they also probably wouldn't have launched in in the summer at a higher rate. So but I think that gives you a sense of the the rate that you get is often is kind of a a split of the difference between, and now that that difference has really gotten exacerbated, that split is you can be pretty far on on one side or the other.
So I guess what I'm asking is if you can come back and and we can look at it just real simply and say, over 12 months over, and I think 12 months seems like a reasonable timeframe on it. I'm not asking for crazy algorithms or Excel spreadsheets and pivot tables. I just generally speak. How do we look at, does, is there a savings? And if there is, how much is it actually? You know, we're talking $5 a month for, $2 a month for $20.
Sure. And so you want to have comparing the fixed, the fixed to the, okay, yeah, well, I'll go back and see what we can do because we don't actually have, you know, the price from that time.
Okay.
So we'll see what we can put together to help help you have that kind of assessment.
But you certainly know what other towns are doing.
And what the amounts are. So you could say, even if you cross out the name of the town, here's an example, correct?
Well, we could, although there are no, there are no other Rhode Island aggregation communities. So these are, those seven communities are the first and only aggregation communities who have moved forward in the state. Who have, so there are, there are lots of other prices out for different, you know, commercial entities, all sorts of things, but for, you know, municipalities who are doing these community-wide programs, those prices aren't, aren't out there.
So Patrick, you know that I'm going to vote to move forward on this on my next comment? It makes it extremely difficult when we ask the direct question, and I understand you can't know all the stuff. But Mary just asked a great question, and there was no direct answer to it. That's really frustrating. And if we're going to commit 23,000 residents to having to make a choice on this, can't do it on almost, I can't do it on what I I don't know because doesn't work for me. So I, as I said, I'm going to vote to move forward on this. I don't feel like you need to change my mind on that. But I really need more than just, I think, and it might be, doesn't work. Not if I'm going to commit residents to it. So any other discussion?
I would just like to mention, I know the, our Chief of Police has an extensive background in the energy industry, and I think we should consult him too on this contract.
Great, great point, Tim. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Like you, Mr. Chairman, I feel the same way. I mean, I'll vote to go forward if we were at this point to really take present this to our residents or to go, I would not commit to it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Standing. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda was I-7. This is Town Treasurer Hassel, and this is a request to lock in energy contracts with Best Practice.
Really?
So the town is in the market to renew our energy contract. In Rhode Island, 19 out of the 39 communities have chosen Best Practice to facilitate better pricing on energy. So we are looking for a motion to permit Best Practice to enter into a contract with a supplier for up to three years. And Best Practice has a team here if there's any specific questions.
What should we be asking? Honestly, it's one of those is we're just, we're trying to get the best price possible. You've done your shopping around and you found the best price. Did I capture it well?
Yep.
Outstanding. Is this a fix or is this a managed program?
Great question. Mr. Administrator?
So the last contract is due to expire. It was with, the supplier was Constellation. We use power options through the League of Cities and Towns. We've been monitoring what they've been offering for months now, and we've entertained the business of Best Practices. Best Practices is becoming more involved in the state supply, and they're acting as a broker. So that would be our broker. They have daily, they have the energy rates. They're here today to talk about what the rates are today. And they, we're ready to lock into the new rate. So they're here, and if they could please, Frank, and Best Practices, if you can tell us what the rates are and what we should expect if we move in the next few days to lock in.
Let me start off by saying, you guys are troopers. Nice job.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make just one remark there, just for the record, we do have a received that meeting. These are updated rates from the ones that were actually provided in the packet.
Are you here to answer questions? Is that, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
How much are we looking to save?
So there's no.
If we lock in.
No savings right now. You guys are in a six-cent contract coming out of COVID. The energy landscape has changed pretty dramatically. So what we're recommending right now, on top of you guys having a, you guys have a net metering agreement in place where you're getting billed credits on a bunch of your accounts. So the cheapest way to buy energy right now would be to float on the spot market, and you're not locking in a price. But because you need to be utility billed and and have that, right now, the lowest price we were found was nine, like 9.9 cents with First Point Power. And and the way we kind of structured that agreement is you would lock in, so there's four components that make up your your fixed price. There's capacity, RPS, ancillaries, and energy. You would lock in the the three, the top three buckets of capacity, RPS, and ancillary costs for three years with First Point Power because those components don't change too much, but they do change enough. And and especially with all the changes that we're seeing with RPS requirements, it's a way to just lock those costs in now. The energy market is really where we're seeing the big savings. Right now, the 2024 market is at a 12-month low, as of today even. So locking that in now, you're getting it at the lowest price that it's been for the last 12 months. The same thing can't be said for what's happening in '25 and '26. We think that there's a little bit of premiums on those markets. But having this kind of contract in place gives you guys the flexibility to act when we do see the the '25 and '26 market come down. So you'll be buying at the low for '24. And we'll be looking and reaching out and recommending when to lock in your price for '25 and '26 because the way the energy markets move now, especially in New England, we're tied into the global market. So anything that happens in the Middle East can affect pricing, anything that happens in Russia, South America, Brazil hydro, Brazil's hydro levels, you know, that all can move pricing in an instant. So having this type of contract affords you guys the flexibility to act quickly. Instead of having to go out to bid and, you know, want, you know, whenever the contract's up, because as it stands now, your, your guys' contract ends. Some of the accounts are up December 16th of this year. Then you'll be on a, on a market-based rate, which is just completely dictated by, you know, essentially weather in the middle of a New England winter, which Leach has exposed.
I understand it's more expensive.
Just to put things into perspective, so statewide, at the time when we locked in with the league, we're at about six, six cents, about six cents per kilowatt hour. When we met last, it was a couple of days ago. What was that? What was that equivalent? Like, if we were to lock in tomorrow morning, what would it have been?
Right now, the low would be about 10 cents, 10, 001 was the low we got today.
But that's much better than the quotes we've been getting from our previous supplier, which was around 11. Every, every, every time they sent it to us for the last few months, it's been, to the best of my knowledge, around 11 cents or more. So it's.
So this sounds right and reasonable. It sounds like we have flexibility as the market changes. We can take advantage of that if we, if we should. Is this council missing anything?
So, so the 10, 001, that's the FPP supplier?
Yeah, that would be if we just locked in for 12 months with them right now.
Okay. And and so that's what we would do is lock in for a 12-month, and then look again in 24 months to renegotiate, or look for another purchase?
We're predicting, so you'd be locking into a three-year index.
Okay, okay.
The first 12 months would be fixed.
Okay. At 10, 01, yeah.
10. At 9, 9, 5, because the.
Okay. I went down, okay.
And that sounds better, right?
Yeah.
Probably what we're seeing right now, sometime in February or early March, is going to be the next buying opportunity for '25. So at that point, we would reach out to finance team here and make our recommendations, if that's the case. We would hedge something for '25.
Okay.
So you would be fixed for '25 prior to the start and be able to take advantage of the net metering credits as well?
Sir, how much do we spend currently?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay.
I was talking a month, a month.
The whole budget, the whole budget, just as.
Eighty thousand a month. And that's, that's including with our net metering credits.
Eighty, eighty, our cost is 80,000 today here? Okay.
Through the whole town. And that's at seven cents.
So when you get your own bill and it's $50, stop complaining. We pay $80,000. I'm joking, of course. Tremendous, yeah. It sounds like this was vetted out well. Is there, what are we not asking that we should be right now? Have we, have we covered all those scenarios here that we need to?
Okay, perfect.
I I do have a couple of questions.
I want you to ask.
Because you said the 80K per month is minus, it's offset by the net metering?
Yeah, so.
So if.
It would be much higher.
Okay.
It would be looking more like 95,000 a month. We get, we get through our net metering credits, we get approximately 15% of the savings per month on our overall. But yeah, if we didn't, if we didn't have the net metering credits, it would be 15,000, so you'd be about 95,000.
So it's approximately 15 discount through the net metering?
Correct.
Okay, do, don't we have some solar, roof solar also in town?
On the, on the town buildings, there's a few buildings in town that have the solar.
Right.
The, from what I gather, the revenue is not very much. It's like 41 or $10 per year. For those buildings, just put the GM in, the fire station, and then like the is really not much there, basically.
Yeah.
Any other questions? It doesn't look like with this Best Practice, we're going to see too much of a savings. It's just more locking, we're more getting more locked in.
We're just limiting, we're limiting our costs.
Can you use your mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're limiting our costs going forward. It's not basically, there's no, there will be no any savings at all. It's just limiting what we.
Okay. And this is for 12 months, so we would be up to negotiate?
It's actually a three-year agreement with First Point Power.
Okay.
The first 12, you're locking in a fixed price, but
Right.
For the contract, you're just locking in certain parts of your energy price or your electric price, and then the energy piece, we would be hedging at a further date for '25 and '26.
So we would adjust to another, a new fixed fixed price after 12-month period? Got it. And that could be really high or could be very low. You, I mean, nobody really knows.
Right.
Right, because as he. Right.
Have been happening.
Yep.
And you typically lock in each year separately? So we're locking this upcoming year?
No, I mean, if for some reason, in a couple of months, everything, the war ends and, you know, things are going the way they are. Our natural gas levels right now are at, you know, over, are better than the five-year average. So that's why we're seeing the price have come down. Natural gas has a lot to do with electricity.
Okay.
Something like that happened, and we see two, you know, the next two years drop back down six cents.
Can always put things on dimmers.
Yeah.
Other questions from the council?
So we just need a motion. What is the motion to? What's that?
Sorry, you have the motion?
Oh, we did make a motion. I'm so sorry. It looks like we did. It was Tony and Aaron.
I don't, I don't have that. I have that.
I wrote that on the long line. We did not make a motion yet.
Write out the motion. Do you remember what that was?
So we just need a motion. Go ahead.
Sure. I have to permit Best Practice Energy to enter into a contract with a supplier for up to three years.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for hanging with us.
Thank you, Carl.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J1, and this is RFP 1025, the statistical update reevaluation. We had the bid opening today at 12, and we did receive two bids for that. The first bid was from Catalyst Tax, C A M A Inc., and that was in the amount of 155,907. And that was in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred and seven. And then we also, the second bid was from Vision Government Solutions, Inc., and that was in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Is this in keeping with what we thought it would be?
The tax assessor is here, and she's been waiting all day, so she's happy to answer that.
Take care now, Bill.
I'll make this short because my bedtime reminder went off on my phone.
I don't need to be reminded. Please.
This is in keeping, uh, with, with what we expected. Um, the updates, we do get, uh, reimbursements from the state for them, so.
Outstanding, okay. We just need a motion to refer to the administrator and the.
And the tax assessor, so move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the administrator and tax assessor, acting in the best interest of the town, is there any other discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was J two, and this is for bid ten twenty-six, the Library Strategic Planning Services. Bid opening was held today at noon, we received two bids. First bid was from Transform Dot Forward, and that was in the amount of thirty-two thousand. And the second bid was from Constructive Disruption LLC, and that was in the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred.
Motion to refer to the town administrator and, uh, Rogers Free Library Director, Eileen Dyer. Um, to act in the best interest of the town.
Definitely.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, as stated, this was from the, the grant that we spoke of at our last meeting, was that correct? Through the, it's fifty thousand, is that the, the dollars that are used on this? Or am I confusing this with something else, I'm sorry?
No, it's, um, the Friends of the Library, they're required to do.
I'm sorry.
To do the, uh, the study every five years by law, all the friends agreed to pay for it.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Any other discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So we'd have a request to go into executive session. Under Rhode Island General Law's forty-two dash forty-six dash five A five. Um, in particular, open space acquisition, acquisition of real property.
Is there a so moved?
So moved.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, any discussion? There is, this council wishes the, the people of Bristol, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Um, Happy New Year, and any, if you celebrate something that I did not say, then please know that we all say happy. We hope you enjoy your holidays, um, and it is such a beautiful place to be, and, um, we hope it's wonderful for you. Any other discussion?
Yes, uh, Bosch Fashters, Flis Natale, if please unmoved.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good night, everyone, thank you, we'll be back out after executive.